Good evening and welcome to the May 1st meeting of the Norwood School Committee. We apologize for being slightly delayed. We had some tech problems. But would everybody, oh, we are coming to you from the Savage Center in our school committee room. All members except for the Chair are in attendance. She will be absent today. Would all those in the Savage Center please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we will call the meeting to order at 7:13. First on our agenda is the approval of minutes. We have minutes from March 27th, both business and executive session, from the April 1st executive session, from the April 10th business meeting and executive sessions. And it says here April 24th, regular session. Executive session? What day was it, April 24th?
That was last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday, right. That wasn't executive session, right? I was confused.
Can we go one by one?
Sure.
Alright, so I'm gonna motion that we table March 27th executive because I have some questions I need to ask in executive session.
Okay. So...
Sorry, I didn't hear Teresa. What did she say?
Teresa...
Eleven.
No, go ahead.
Donna, I was just making a motion to table the March 27th executive session minutes because I have to clarify something in executive session.
Okay, thank you.
Kate seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But is that business too or just executive?
Well, I'm getting to that now.
Just executive. That was just executive, so that passes four to zero for the executive session.
Yep, and then I can also make a motion to table March 27th business only because we just received them this afternoon. I haven't read them yet unless everybody else did.
No.
Second.
So Teresa made a motion to also table the March 27th business minutes. David seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes four to nothing.
And then if you want, I can go through each one because different configurations of our committee were at each session.
Go ahead.
So I'll make a motion to approve April 1st executive session. We were all there except for David.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Teresa made the motion for April 1st executive session. David seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
So that was three to zero with David abstaining.
Yep, and then I'll make a motion to approve April 10th executive session. Just Joan, Kate, and I wrote that one.
Do you have anything with the business one too?
Well, that's separate.
Okay.
Because David joined us for that one.
Okay. Alright, I'm sorry. So Teresa made the motion for the April 10th executive session. Kate seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
So that passes three to zero with David abstaining.
Okay, and then I'll make a motion to pass April 10th business meeting. All four of us were at that.
Is there a second? Teresa made the motion for April 10th business. David seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes four to zero.
And then lastly, I'll make a motion to approve April 24th executive session. We were all on that one.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that passes four to zero. Okay, thank you. Is there any correspondence this evening, Mr. Wells?
I don't have any.
Excellent. We are not going to have a report on a warrant signed by the Chair and Marie Missola because she is not here, so that will be tabled until the next meeting.
Joan, just one question. Anne Marie is coming. She's just gonna be late. And then once she gets here, we can vote on the field trip. We just have to wait for her to come.
I was talking about the warrants?
Oh, sorry. Dr. Mina just asked me what's going on with the field trips, so keep distracted.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Once Anne Marie is here, we can then have her give the warrant report and we can vote on the field trips.
Yep, yep. Yes, but, any objection to tabling the warrants until the next meeting? No, okay. Public comment. So as a reminder, public, excuse me. Public participation in the public comment period can be accessed in two ways. One, in person at the meeting. You can sign up in advance to the superintendent's office by noon the day of the meeting to pre-register. Or you may sign in at the meeting. Or you may call the superintendent's office at 781-762-6804 by noon on the day of the meeting to register and receive a meeting link that will be accessible for public comment only. Did anybody call to pre-register for public comment?
Not that I remember.
Okay. Is there anyone here who is here for public comment? Okay, so seeing none, I will declare public comment closed at 7:21. The next item on our agenda is the school choice hearing. Mr. Wells?
Yes. So for the school choice hearing, as you know, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 76, Section 12B, requires the Norwood School Department to enroll non-resident students unless the school committee votes by June 1st, 2024, not to participate in the school choice program. Based on the following reasons, the superintendent recommends that the Norwood School Committee vote not to participate in the school choice program during the 2024-2025 school year. One, enrollments in Norwood are increasing, have been relatively volatile or certain grades within particular schools, and shortly will be reaching capacity enrollments for some existing school sites. Choice students, once enrolled, are the system's responsibility until graduation or age 22 for sped students and may pose overcrowding in certain schools or courses. Two, the income stream for choice students is on a declining scale with less income per pupil this year than last year. Three, Norwood would be subsidizing the cost of educating each choice student in that our per pupil expenditure is above the maximum allowable reimbursement. Four, a student may enroll as a regular education student with $5,000 as reimbursement, then apply for a team evaluation and sped services exceeding $5,000 would be entirely by the Norwood Public Schools. We would entertain a vote, again, based on the following reasons, for the Norwood School Committee vote not to participate in the school choice program during the 24-25 school year.
I'd just like to make a point of order and clarification. It's the recommendation of the acting superintendent and the acting assistant superintendent?
Yes, so, yes, fair enough.
Sorry. Is there any discussion?
My question, that we vote to not participate in the school choice program for the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Any more discussion or any new discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that passes four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Thank you.
Okay, I am gonna now turn this over to Kate and David to do the introduction for the appearance.
Great, I'll have, there was talk at one point about moving up the middle schooling, but we're not, right?
No, we have to wait for Anne Marie to come.
Okay. If you guys want to come up, I'm gonna have the presenters introduce themselves and then we're going to jump right in. So just to let you know, this is iterative process and tonight is going to be the first phase of what we've been working on to share with you all in the community. So we're very excited to get questions and sort of initial responses to move forward with the next phase. So on May 15th, we'll sort of have more information and at the end of the presentation, I'll talk about next steps a little more in depth. So if you guys could introduce yourselves just for the community and then we'll jump in if that's alright?
Good evening. Brian Riley, Principal of the Prescott Elementary School and member of the working group.
Good evening. Priya Sanghaliya. I'm a Senior Project Manager at the Sandborn Map Company and we are the consultants who have been supporting the working group on this study.
Hi everyone. Michael Bullier, Principal of the Willett Early Childhood Center and member of the working group.
Hi everybody. Diane Ferrera, Principal at Bolsh and also member of the working group. So Priya's gonna get us started and then hand it off to the principals.
So just to start off with what we're gonna cover today, just do some introductions. Who is part of this working group and dive into project goals and objectives? And then also touch on what the guiding principles and, you know, pillars of this study were. Look a little bit at the timeline and then describe to you what the process has been and the workflow for projects like these, and then we'll talk about next steps. So the project team has kind of evolved from the start of this project, but it has come together well. We have, of course, Kate Sebignan from the school committee, a school committee member. Everybody here with me is on the project, I mean, the working group. For the Sandborn Geospatial, you know, my company, we are a really good, strong group. I don't have all my colleagues here with me today, but you will be seeing them at forthcoming meetings. But Michelle Giorgiani is the principal on this project. I have kind of been leading it. But Carson Bellino, he is a project manager also with Sandborn who has been doing a lot of the work with the working group. And two of my other colleagues, Ashley Tadif and Russell Cohen, have been doing a lot of the technical work behind the scenes. There have been a lot of additional collaborators and I will let, you know, Brian, if you want to introduce them, that would be great.
Sure, additional collaborators. The first group working with Norwood Public Schools are our colleagues, elementary principals. So Kerry Hutchins from the Cleveland, Steve Olson from the Oldham, Scarlett Grant from the Callahan, and Kristen Noonan from the Little Mustangs Preschool Academy. And our central office partners thus far, Paul Ricciardi, Director of Facilities, Al Bishop, NPS Transportation Director, and Matt Wells, our Acting Assistant Superintendent and Director of Finance, and also a school committee member, David Ilz.
Just to give you a quick little background on our company, we are a geospatial consulting firm based out of Boston. We were called Abgeo, but then we recently merged with the Sandborn Map Company, which is really one of the oldest mapping companies actually in the country. And we bring together a lot of really great strengths, but we still have our core services component. And we've been doing these school redistricting projects for a while now. It's sort of a little bespoke, I think. You know, it's great that we've been able to work with small groups like this to, you know, really understand and identify what the issues are and work with you to come to a solution that works. So we've worked with, I think, you know, one of the, like, the big ones was Newton, like, almost like 10 years ago now. We worked with Lexington, Bilrika, Waymouth, among just a few. We most recently worked with Plymouth School Districts. And each have been, you know, different challenges in their own way. But, you know, we've worked with the same sort of, you know, I think, guiding principles and project workflow that has worked successfully with a lot of these projects. Next slide. Just to dive into the project goals and objectives. As all of you know, there was a town meeting warrant article from May 2023, which essentially, you know, gave the charge to do the study and that's what we are doing. And hopefully, you know, the study will give you some really good results to then, you know, to the next steps. So to give you a little background on what the goals and objectives are, the idea is to create scenarios that will help to optimize space at the elementary schools. And then of course, along with that is how do you balance demographics and potentially also reduce transportation costs among just a few of the, you know, guiding pillars? And you'll see more of that coming up again and again. And then also determine what is the potential implementation timeline of this, you know, of whatever results we come up with and the scenarios that we build and what everybody comes to a consensus with. Should it be sooner than the 25-26 school year or, you know, should it be then? So, sorry.
That would be the soonest.
No sooner than the 25, sorry. So what is the potential of that early implementation or do we have to push it back? So all of these sort of objectives or goals was what, you know, led us through this whole process. As far as the guiding pillars, I know that the school committee hasn't voted on these guiding pillars, but this is what, you know, when we do these projects with a lot of school districts, we propose a lot of guiding principles and pillars to the group. And they, we sort of say, okay, what is it that will be helpful for you to determine which scenario is the best for you? And so, you know, we put out several of them. And I think the working group, along with, you know, all of the other collaborators on this project, determined that optimizing physical space, enhancing instructional programming, balancing the school building capacities, which is a really key piece of this project to account for future growth, and to also make the demographics more balanced and finally to potentially lower transportation costs is what would guide the study. So when we build any scenarios, we would then evaluate them based on these guiding pillars. And then I'm gonna hand it over to Brian.
Yep, and so Ms. Ferrera will have the first slide.
Sorry.
Yep, so I'm actually part of the Coakley Middle School Building Committee as well. So as everybody knows, we are building a new middle school. And the pretty fantastic thing is that we'll have kids from 5 through 12 now in 21st Century Schools in the town of Norwood. But this gave us an opportunity to really think about what we wanted to do for elementary school and what we would get, you know, what are the opportunities and potential for elementary. So with the new Coakley Middle School building, elementary schools could potentially lessen overcrowding issues once the new Coakley becomes a five-to-eight model. The new five-to-eight middle school model would allow more students in grades 5 through 12 in 21st Century Buildings and learning spaces. We may have an opportunity, you know, with that, we definitely will. There's a whole learning plan and educational plan that went into the Coakley Middle School build. So to enhance fifth grade educational programming, to align more with a team-based learning model. It's created an upper and a lower school model within the new school building. You know, like, a grades five and six will primarily be together, seven and eight will be together. We're able to enhance overall offerings and multiple subject areas for elementary program programming, hopefully, balance school building capacities to account for future growth. We don't want to be in a situation in 10 more years where we're overcrowded again at the elementary. So what could we do and what scenarios could we look at that might help with that situation? So this also provides an opportunity to examine the current elementary school model and address overcrowding and programming in alignment with existing student needs.
So looking at our initial considerations, sort of aligning the guiding pillars, thinking about where the new Coakley Middle School will take our fifth graders. We had a number of considerations. The first thing was, there's multiple configuration models that a district can consider. You can look around the geographic area, the state of Massachusetts, and there's one such as singular grade levels in one school, keeping things just like they currently are with, where it would be a one through four, and looking at future growth of early childhood programs, things like the kindergarten, Little Mustangs Preschool Academy, and really what grade configuration aligns with our guiding pillars that were previously shared on one of the first slides. We are gonna be sharing out examples of configurations in two weeks that were not considered. So tonight you'll kind of hear, hey, here's what we are considering and here are some reasons why. We'll also give you on the 15th some situations where we say, this is really a scenario or configuration that wasn't viable and wasn't one that we were gonna move forward with. Ensuring the continuity of neighborhood schools was important. I think Norwood really finds value in their neighborhood schools and we've seen that over the course of a number of years, whether it be from the pandemic, where you had students that really, and staff who really understood who the kids were in their, in their classrooms, are able to really tailor resources to those families. Has been a real benefit and something that I think our experience as school leaders have been that our staff and our families really, really value that. It will allow for relationships, relationship building and continuity of educational services. In one school, community was a high value and so what the goal is, is not to have students transition more than they need to. And so one example that I gave was of a changing every year. So a first grade building, a second grade building, a third grade building, you have a new set of specialists, principals, that really we found would be really challenging for our students and families. Really careful not to add cost to the already stretched operating budget. We are, the working group is very in tune with not only FY25, but the forecast for FY26 and kind of landscape of funding in the Commonwealth. And so looking at saying, there's a lot of things we can do with an unlimited purse, but that is not the case. And so that is not something that we were saying, let's just shoot for the moon and see where we land. It really was, okay, let's talk very broadly about, do we think that this is going to be a cost increase or not? Full disclosure, many of you are gonna have many questions as to like, what is the exact cost of this and how's that going to go? Those are being worked on. That is not gonna be something that we're gonna be able to give you a dollar and cents answer to tonight. So lastly, we looked at the K-4 configuration with some redistricting and thought that that would align most with the guiding pillars. And so that's where we are tonight. We're gonna go into a little bit as to how we arrived at that. And Dr. Bullier is gonna get into sort of the K-4 model, some of the benefits of that, before we move on to talk about some next steps.
So as Principal Riley shared, I'm gonna talk about the opportunities that we discussed with a K-4, K-3-4 configuration. So opening the Willett as a sixth elementary school and redistricting. Firstly, that would reduce our overall building capacities across the district and would allow us more room for future growth and programming as our district continues to evolve and grow. Also, it would reduce the transitions for kindergarten students and their families. As Principal Riley's, you know, just said, we want to reduce the need for students to be transitioning across schools and having to build new relationships with new teams if we can. It would also keep kindergarten students in the neighborhood and closer to their school. And it would create opportunities for kindergarten students to learn from older students and provide opportunities for those collaborations, book buddies, for example, or technology buddies, and even just passing each other in the hallway and seeing what a fourth grader looks like compared to a kindergartner who's just starting their school experience. And overall, it would shrink our elementary district and reduce transportation costs as students would be closer to the neighborhood schools by adding a sixth school onto the map. Continuing on the opportunities of opening the Willett as a sixth elementary school and redistricting. Thank you. Kindergarten educators, so thinking about this from a pedagogical standpoint, would have cross-grade level collaboration, so thinking about those opportunities to work on vertical alignment. Kindergarten and first grade teachers, for example, working together. It also gives students and parents an opportunity to make connections with their neighborhood school peers beginning in kindergarten. You know, something that we often hear from families moving on from kindergarten is that missed opportunity of, wow, my child really developed a great friendship with this student because they were in the same class all year long, but we found out they actually go into different neighborhood elementary schools for first grade. So it would keep those friendships tight from kindergarten onward, being in the same school. It would also allow our educators to maintain student relationships beyond kindergarten and serve as in-building supports for grade one. We know that children's first educators are really impactful and that's a really special bond. And being able to keep that bond beyond kindergarten and be able to visit their kindergarten teacher and maybe even be a leader in their classroom down the road is an opportunity that we discussed. Also, from a pedagogical standpoint, the length of the school day would be increased by 45 minutes and provide additional time on learning in kindergarten in exchange for students traveling on buses from into neighborhood elementary schools. And there's a citation here that just highlights, right, the benefits of a longer school day that we see especially for some of our most vulnerable student populations, including neurodivergent students and English learners. And I want to highlight that many of our students who take bus transportation are currently having this length of a school day, but instead of traveling to and from the elementary schools on buses, they would be spending that time not on transportation, but rather in classrooms with their peers and their teachers.
Dr. Muller, just to clarify, you're talking about the kindergarten day being lengthened by 45 minutes?
Correct. Correct. Thank you. Yep, the kindergarten day would be lengthened. And then lastly, this K-3-4 configuration would bring kindergarten into a sound educational model that's consistent with all of our elementary schools. So thinking about consistent specialty programming, access to those specialists, you know, social, emotional, benefit, behavioral support, et cetera, would be available to our kindergarten students across all of the six schools.
So I can address a little bit on the timeline. So we started this project somewhere in the January timeframe where we, you know, embarked on the first step, which is data gathering and component building. And I'll get a little bit more into detail about what that's all about. But it really was, you know, gathering all the data that was needed for this project. And then the next step was building and revising scenarios, which is what we spend a lot of time doing, going over several scenarios. We developed a story map, which, you know, we will eventually share with the entire community. And then there are several additional steps that are forthcoming. You know, this, of course, this meeting and then our meeting on the 15th. And then opening it up to public comment and a webinar. And then we're hoping for a school committee vote and then a plan for implementation and communication, which, you know, will be, you know, okayed by the school committee. And then finally, delivering Ufinal maps and deliverables. So this is a very, you know, overall rough timeline, but, you know, you get a sense of what all the various steps are in this project. I'm going to give you a little bit of background on what this, you know, I'm calling it redistricting because, you know, that's the process and the workflow for typically for these projects. We've looked at this and, you know, this is what we will hopefully be sharing with you on the 15th. But this is what it involves. And, you know, we shared this with, you know, the working group and a larger group during the kickoff when we started off this project, but just to reiterate here, the first step is of course data gathering and processing. We get from the school district all the student locations, the addresses of the students that we can geo-code them. We get the information about the students, their, you know, demographic information, their grade levels, whether they're in any special programs. We understand what the problem is that a school district is trying to solve. And then we set up these workflows that are helpful for then generating these scenarios and giving you an overall picture of, you know, if we implement this scenario, this is what's going to happen. So that's what sort of the first step is. The second step is component and scenario building. And components, as you will get familiar with, are essentially like little, you know, pieces of a jigsaw puzzle or building blocks, which we have to create. So if you think of, you know, a geography of an area, a lot of times you think of census blocks. I don't know if you're familiar with those, but, you know, for redistricting, like, you know, congressional redistricting, you use census blocks. But for school redistricting, or, you know, even if you try to, you know, redo the map a little bit, you need something to say, okay, I'm going to move this and move this around. And so you have to create those building blocks and that's what that first step is because those building blocks have to be made intentionally. Like, you know, what is it that makes sense? Is it a neighborhood? Is it a bunch of streets? Are those streets drawn correctly? I mean, are the boundaries of that area drawn correctly based on what everybody has an understanding of the town? So that's what we do as a component building step. And then of course, building scenarios. Okay, which building blocks go together logically for a specific scenario? And then how do we, the next step is evaluating them. How do we evaluate those scenarios based on the guiding principles that we've, you know, guiding pillars that we've identified? Does this scenario match up with the transportation cost? Does it match up with keeping neighborhood schools? You know, what are the pros and cons of every scenario? And then finally, of course, the project includes community outreach. So once the working group identifies something that makes sense, that, okay, this is something that's, you know, that's, we acknowledge will work for the school district, let's put it out to the larger community and that's when we present those to the community. So a lot of those first steps are complete at this point and, you know, come the 15th, we'll be presenting more to you. The next slide. So data gathering and analysis, this just gives you a little bit more, you know, graphic representation of what these geo-codes look like. So as you can see in that image on the right, there are a lot of little sort of blurry dots on there. Those are student locations. So you can see where all the students are located in the Norwood School District. You know, there are patches where really there's no, there's no housings, there are no students. And so you can see that very clearly. And then on the left, what you can see is those components that we've built, this working group and together with, you know, our group, we've created these components, which is what we have been using for creating these scenarios. And again, those components are very, you know, deliberately made, if you will. The next slide.
And you can see, I'll point on the left-hand side of that slide that we have worked with the town to identify developments that are coming online in the very near future that have been approved. And so we know that when town meeting voted recently with the new 3A, that it was important for us to say, how might this impact these maps? And so we've identified some of those with the help of the town planner and folks at Town Hall to determine sort of where those might be located so that there are some considerations. And we have some historical data as to when other new units have come online. What sort of students are we getting out of those, out of those units historically?
So this sort of, again, gives you a little more perspective into those components as scenario building blocks, you know, think of puzzle pieces, and, you know, we did work with the NPS working group, you know, and these are, you know, folks here are intimate with the town, know the streets, know where to draw those boundaries, so that's how those were built. And then they were, they're basically labeled with, with the, and, you know, we're just sort of giving you this little background to get you more familiar with what you're going to see. They're labeled with the name of the current district and a number. So that's what that label means. And then, of course, you know, the corresponding color for every district. And then what happens is, you know, paying close attention to those neighborhoods, again, you know, like a little zoomed-in view of how those were built, where are those streets, are they, you know, we make, we're deliberate about putting them behind a parcel so that, you know, kids who live on the same street, you know, will end up potentially in the same, you know, group that is in the same district. So that you're not, you know, potentially breaking up a street. So, you know, a lot of that is very intentional when it's been built. And so we've actually put together a total of thirty-four components that were delineated using this, you know, this very deliberate method. So what is a scenario? And I mean, we've been using the word a lot, but, you know, it's a proposal or an option that organizes these components, and they are built in alignment with the guiding principles. You know, we, we put them together and then get feedback and, you know, work in, it's a very collaborative process. And then after discussing what are the pros and cons and the merits of these scenarios, we have prioritized three scenarios which we'll be presenting to you the next time around. The next slide. And this is just giving you some examples of these scenarios that we've built in some of the other districts that we've worked with, just to, you know, give you a flavor. As you can see on the right, this is the Buildica Public Schools. We will build a scenario and then we'll give you very specific statistics and numbers and data to tell you that, okay, using, you know, the current student locations, this is what would happen if you implemented this, this particular scenario. This is the number of, this is the percentage, you know, you use a capacity number for a school. You can identify, okay, if we implement this scenario, this is the percent capacity you would reach. This is the number of students you'd have at every grade level. This is the demographic composition of every school, you know, students on school lunches, you know, if there's a, if there's an interest in identifying what a racial distribution is, all of that is provided. And also students impacted, like, what are the number of students that are impacted in each scenario? So once we build a scenario, all of that information is provided to evaluate the scenario. Little bit more on this, you know, we will keep, you know, keeping the neighborhoods, identifying what is it that really, you know, makes a difference, what is the pros and the cons, what are the, what's the walkability, the drivability, all of that could potentially be considered. Next slide. And then I just wanted to show you, if you could progress it a little bit more, Matt. This is what the current elementary school students and districts looks like. So you have your, your five elementary school districts. I know it's a little hard to read, but if you could digest each of those. Those capacity numbers for every school were determined, and I'll let the principal speak to this, but there was a lot of thought that went into each of those numbers, and they were based on the number of classrooms, general education classrooms that are available. What is the size of that classroom? How many students can it take? And then that, that number was derived based on that. And then you can see that, okay, based on that capacity, this is currently what we have in each of those grades. And as you can see, of course, you know, there are no Ks in any of them, and they're all in Willet, so that's, you know, that's clear. But, and then you can see that, you know, based on those capacity numbers, which schools are at capacity and which school have potential capacity. And then, of course, there's also a little breakdown percentages of what, you know, multilingual students there are, special ed and low-income students. So it kind of gives you a really good perspective into what it is, what the current scenario, if you will, is of the Norwood schools. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that, that previous slide as far as the capacities are concerned?
So these are current numbers, yeah, current numbers.
And one of the goals, one of our guiding pillars is to allow more capacity in our schools, because when you look at a hundred and three percent, a hundred percent, that speaks to the experience right now in our elementary schools being really at or above capacity and feeling really overcrowded.
Great. So as Priya mentioned, and as I said in the, in the beginning, this is a sort of a phased project. So tonight, we really wanted to take time to explain the process and all that goes into it to the community as well as the school committee. And then we're going to spend the next couple of weeks collecting some remaining logistical data around transportation, transportation, some programming questions as well. And then we're going to incorporate the responses and questions that we received from today, from the school committee and that, if any other outreach that we receive, and then make any tweaks. We're going to meet, make any tweaks. We're looking at staffing. We're looking at, when we talk about programming, we're talking about adaptive education services, specials, things like that. Just making sure that we've, we've have information on that to be part of the conversation so that on the fifteenth, when we show the scenarios that Priya mentioned, that we can have a better, more accurate look at those particular scenarios. And then after we have that, we're going to get questions from the school committee on those scenarios. We have a community engagement plan for both staff and families. The next slide, which I'm not ready for quite yet, will outline some tentative dates for a community engagement plan, but depending upon what the school committee discusses and how we look at the timeline. You know, I said tentative for a reason, so that could push out a little bit. This is a really important process. There's, we had a goal, we had an attached, a goal attached of like wanting a vote by June, but there, if there's reasons to push into the summer, you know, we are getting a new superintendent. We certainly want to have input there from our new superintendent, especially around implementation, right, and timeline, and with everything going on with the middle school. So those are all key conversations that are part of this iterative process. So when we say have a school, a school committee vote on the June twelfth, that can change. That's just to keep our, you know, keep our workflow moving. So part of the community engagement process, for the next slide, please. What we are talking about it being comprised of are having two in-person public comment events where people could respond to the scenarios that they're going to see. They could ask questions. They could have their voice heard at this point. And we would want to kind of do that like a town meeting info session where we could record it and then push it out online through parent squares so that people who couldn't attend could watch it. And you could also be online and ask questions that way, or you could watch it later. And then we're going to have a survey open after that first initial event where if you've watched it or you attended, you can fill out a survey, which is basically going to just give sort of input about the scenarios. And then we would want to offer a public comment event also on a weekend date. This is also tricky where, when it comes to the timeline because we've got Memorial Day and graduation weekend. So we're thinking tentatively for June first, which is the day before the high school graduation, but we're talking about having this at the Balch on that Saturday before in the morning. So we don't think that would cross over with a large number of families if there was like a rain date for graduation. But again, that is up for discussion. It's just, you know, getting it on the calendar is an important thing to do. So that's what we've talked about so far. And then also, we're going, we've talked to our ELL director and our tech, our JOKID and our technology department about making sure that there's translation options, both for the webinar and for the in-person events. So that is, that's it. I want to thank everybody for your, all the work on this so far and looking forward to the next steps. I'm sure we can take questions now from the committee? I guess we lost Joan.
Should have stepped out for a moment.
Okay. I hope everything's okay.
No, this looks good. Thank you for your work. We've just got a, tonight, are we setting dates in stone or are we, what decisions need to be made on our end?
I don't think that we need any decisions. It just depends on what the conversation sort of bubbles up. You know, we can start talking about the community engagement dates. I know when we shared this in the packet, there was some initial questions, and, you know, the timeline obviously is going to be the, a huge piece of this. But it's important to note as people think about this that as a district, with the middle school pieces and those puzzle pieces in terms of staffing and our budget as a whole, it's really important that key people are looking at this holistically. And so those are some of the conversations that are happening in the next couple of weeks, months, but will be, you'll probably hear more about the linked, that connection next week, or in, on the fifteenth as well. Anything else I'm missing that the principals wanted to add that, or you think?
I think to David's point a little bit about, you know, kind of what's expected, I think it, the genuine hope is that there's low barriers to engagement around this, right? So we talked about like, how do we make this the most accessible to our community, our very diverse community? So you have multiple options. Some families may say, I just want to watch the recorded webinar and get my information there and take the survey. Others may want to watch the webinar and then come to an event and sort of be more engaging around questions. And others may say, hey, I've read the materials that are posted online. I really just want to take the survey. I think what we're hoping is to provide families and collaborators with multiple opportunities to get the information and then give genuine feedback. I will say the great thing in working with a partner like Sanborn has been, you know, every week that we have a meeting, we're asking new questions, and then we're asking Priya and her team to be like, oh, can you consider this? Can you think about this? And so as things are uncovered, this isn't really something where it's like the train's on the tracks and we're not deviating. It's like, there's always some shifts where like, oh, that's new information. This is good. And so I really think that this is a process that, you know, we're trying to make it really digestible right now. We probably could have come tonight and given you a three and a half hour presentation, which you would have loved, and been here till midnight, but I think we're saying, okay, let's give some information to the committee and to the public that's really understandable in a way that allows people to understand kind of where we are in the process genuinely, and then really dive in in a couple of weeks to say, this is kind of where we are with some information that then we can really get into the weeds a little bit more. So. But I do, I think that we're all really committed to making sure that this information is accessible to families, that we're collecting it, which also, Kate's point may lead to, you know, sifting through the feedback that people give and say, oh, we didn't consider this, or, oh, this is a really good thought that maybe hasn't come up yet that we could consider. And we have gotten into the weeds a lot. There's, you know, two of us grew up in Norwood and one lives in Norwood now, and so we're like, wait, does that, you know, side of that, you know, configuration piece, is that on this side of the woods or that side of the woods? And so there is a genuine understanding of Norwood, and I think what you'll see in, as we go through this, we're also trying to make it really logical. And we're really not trying to make this so that if people look at it and say, what is going on with this? Something that's very sort of, yep, that makes sense in how it has been established.
And I just want to emphasize that we're solving for a problem, for a challenge here, right? It's sort of an opportunity, but it's also a challenge. When we looked at that slide about our capacity numbers, it's tough. It's tight. And so we have this opportunity and to lessen that, to balance some things that will help our children and help our educators achieve their pursuits, right? We could, you know, we could go through this process and, and the school committee could vote no action, as we talked about the other day, but that doesn't solve for any of these problems. So it is, you know, nothing is perfect probably, right? But we are, this is one of those district-wide challenges that we are looking at, a greater good and a, an opportunity to really shift things for the good here.
And we're trying to shift things in our current financial context too.
Yes.
We're not, we're not trying to propose anything that's going to be an exorbitant cost for the district, knowing where we are as, as a town for the foreseeable future. So it's also an opportunity to think about what other resources that we currently have and how can we best leverage them.
Right. So first, thank you so much for all your work, and I love the working group configuration because, you know, Diana, as you said, you're on our middle school building committee. You and Brian were both part of the visioning for the new building. Michael, you're bringing the voice of the Willet to the table, so it's a great working group, and I thank you for all the work and wish I had the time to also be in the working group because I really want to dive into the weeds, and I'm sure you know that. And I'm sure Kate had already forwarded you my long list of questions when I reviewed this the other night, so I'm not going to go through all of them because I know you're looking at some of them. But I do just want to vocalize a couple of questions and concerns. So I think this argument is embedded in your presentation, but just to remind the community of why we're even looking at this. In 2021, when the school committee decided to move grade five into the new Copley, we analyzed that grade configuration painstakingly of what a six-three versus five-three would look like. And our consultants on that project, AI Three, did a lot of presentations that if you haven't looked at, I would ask you to take a look at it again because they looked at, if you pulled grade five out, what did that mean if the Prescott, the Balch, the Callahan, the Oldham, and the Cleveland? And right now, we know, right, like Brian, you have art and music in a hallway, and Oldham has art and music on a cart, and Balch, you're in the basement, and Callahan is in the basement. And we already know for every one fifth grade classroom that is going to be moved to the Copley, each building probably has two or three competing needs for that one classroom. Is that a fair assessment?
Yep.
Okay. So one question I know we're going to get from the community is, why aren't we closing a school? And why aren't we moving K into the five schools? And maybe that's a scenario you're bringing to us that, hey, we looked at and we don't like, but I, but from my perspective so far in the work that I'm aware of that's been done, that's just physically not possible. Because we're talking about moving out twelve fifth grade classrooms, the Willet has thirteen kindergarten rooms, right? So if we move the kindergartners into the five other schools, it wouldn't solve anything. It would actually make it even harder, and you would still have art and music in hallways, basements, and carts. So building off of that, are you bringing in Jeff Kerr? Because he was one of the people called out in our strategic plan who was supposed to be part of the working group. Is he going to be involved?
Yeah, so that's some of the work we're going to do this, this week. And we kind of talked about how in the scenarios, you guys might be able to speak to this better, the specials, the challenge would be the same. If we, in the, sort of in the direction we're moving. So we didn't necessarily need him yet, but we're absolutely going to have him part of, so we can have more detailed answers, for sure.
And then the other person role that was called out in the strategic plan was somebody from student services. And some of this is going to overlap with our student services audit, so I don't expect your working group to solve all of this, but just that consideration of what special education problem, or problems, programs, excuse me, are in what schools. And then I know you pulled in Al, and having lived through the start times task force for five and a half years, I think I have a pretty good handle over our transportation system. So I'm really interested in what he has to say about what this does for transportation. I don't think it saves us money on general transportation because the number of buses we need is set by the Copley, and then the rest of the tiers are impacted from there. But I do wonder what it does to special education busing and if there's cost efficiencies or effectiveness there. On the note of transportation and start times, I just want to remind everybody that we did promise the union in our impact bargaining around start times that once we got to this process, we would at least consider if the elementaries could start a little bit later. So I would remind you and Al that we put that promise out to the union and we need to do that analysis. The pillars that you talked about, we've never formally seen those as a school committee.
So that was a little bit of a misdirection. So in the beginning of the process, it's been very, I know that the process has been very, it's been interrupted for different reasons. But I think you'll remember when David presented on the things that we were working on.
But we never saw the document. We kept being told it was going to be given to us, and it never was.
It should be in minutes, but I can get it for you.
Well, we never took a vote, so I, I'm not against the pillars.
Like, before we even met Sanborn, when we were originally starting the conversation.
Like we, before we even met at Sandborn, when we were originally starting the conversation, we had elementary pillars.
And then we got more input from our consultants.
Right, it was, it was great to see that they aligned with. But they never came to the school committee for a vote, is what I'm saying. And I don't, I'm not against the pillars, but I do think one of the votes that we should take tonight if we're continuing this work to continue is to make sure the majority of the committee does agree with those pillars.
Well, you did vote for us to start the working group. But I get what you're saying and that's probably easy to do. But I don't think we thought we had to do that. But, because, you know, it was sort of delegated. But we can do that. You wanted, we can do that next, or next meeting.
So is there anything that we'd want to add to those pillars or subtract from those pillars?
Could you go back to that?
What I'm trying to figure out is, are we having a conversation about a process that's going to result in the same pillars? Or do we need a more robust process to kind of talk about adding or subtracting from those pillars? Because I hear your process piece 100%.
Yeah, yeah.
But I also hear you saying you agree with the content.
Well, I'm saying I personally agree, but I don't know if everyone does. So this should be our time to say, yes, we agree, continue to move forward. Or if there's somebody, somebody feels strongly should be added or deleted, then now's our time to give you more guidance before May 15th, right?
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask a question to a question? Did you finish asking all of your questions?
No, I didn't. We can talk about other things. I don't need to just rattle.
Can we, yeah, can we, can we just handle that because it's a, it's a good process point? So I'll open the discussion around the guiding pillars. Is there any additions or subtractions to the guiding pillars that the committee wishes to entertain as prior to making a motion? Or probably a cleaner way to do that would be, does someone want to make a motion to adopt these as the guiding pillars for the elementary study and then we can discuss?
Some vote.
Second.
Okay, so that, the motion was to have the guiding pillars as presented by Sandborn, Apgeo, Sandborn, by our consultants, and David seconded. So is there any discussion?
One discussion point I would say is that you'll see the words attempt and potentially. And that is just key to understanding that, to my note earlier, nothing is perfect. And sometimes an ideal might not be logical, right? So, you know, you could balance things in terms of demographics and high needs populations. And then we would be busing kids, you know, like it would be not tenable for families or for our budget. So this is.
This drove us to even look at it.
Right, right. But we did look at those things. We have scenarios that have these sort of specific angles to them. But it's optimizing.
Yeah, they often work against each other, unfortunately, guiding pillars. But having them there to guide you is what's really key about.
It's a minor edit, but words matter. When I look at all this and then I think about our policies and then how decisions may impact policies, right? Or how policy should impact decisions. I mean, if we can lower transportation costs, great. But for me, just, and I'm just speaking as myself, of course, like that's not like number one to me. I don't want it to go up. So for me, a pillar would be more like maintain or lower transportation costs because part of the way we would lower transportation costs, honestly, is if we change our busing and we don't bus everybody who wants it. We only bus who legally has to be. And I don't think that's what any of us have said so far. So if I could just make one, one edit, it would be that last pillar to change to maintain or potentially lower our transportation costs.
Sure.
Is there any other discussion? So I actually have one, sorry, and I might be throwing a monkey wrench in, which is why I was asking about the process question. There's nothing in the pillars that talk about maintaining the neighborhood part of the neighborhood schools. And I'm wondering if that's intentional or an oversight? Or if we can ask that you consider keeping them as neighborhood schools? I've heard you say that throughout the whole thing. But it's not written as a guiding pillar in the same way to, you know, attempt and potentially maintain or lower school transportation costs. Is that, is there a reason it wasn't in there?
No, I think it was assumed.
Okay. All right, well, you know.
And adding that does not actually devalue or change anything, you'll see.
Like I said, I heard you guys talking about it the whole way through. But I would like to see that pillar added to.
Which one?
To attempt to maintain the neighborhood of neighborhood schools.
So I'm, I'm just going to push back because we've talked about where this is. And the reality of the situation is understanding the way the MSBA works is that when we go back in and when we do the next one, MSBA asks you to consolidate. So I hear what you're saying, but.
I was thinking that too, David, but I feel like for this process.
For this process, yes.
Then it works. It's, you know, this is sort of the, you know, to David's point, it's a, it's an interim process, right? It doesn't fix the fact that our buildings are aging and that's, we're not, we're not thinking about that right now. This is an optimization of what we have, to Michael's point about with the resources that we have. So I think I totally hear your concern and we don't want to, you know, your work, I think your concern is setting a precedent that this is always and forever going to be six, five, six elementary schools.
Correct.
I understand that. But I think right now for this process, as we've said.
I'm only talking about this process.
Yeah, we, that we are trying to respect and adhere to what's, what's, what we have in terms of neighborhood.
Only talking about this process, yeah. So I would love to see some language in there that explicitly mentions the goal of maintaining the neighborhood, the geographic neighborhood aspect of neighborhood schools.
Do you want me to amend my motion? Can I amend my motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so I amend my motion that we approve these guiding pillars with two edits. The first of maintaining or potentially lowering transportation costs and then adding in Joan's recommendation of maintaining the geographic neighborhood schools.
Second.
As much as possible.
As close as possible.
As much as possible, yes, yes. I mean, there's going to have to be some changes because the kids who currently, who live in the Willet neighborhood currently go to the Cleveland and it would be silly to bus them from next door to the Willet to the Cleveland. But maintaining the spirit of the neighborhood.
Well, that's also where we want to maintain or lower transportation.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, is there any other discussion?
Somebody needs to second my amendment? Or did you, Kate?
I did.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of that motion, you're not done yet, but all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye, that was four to zero. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Teresa. Thank you for letting me like.
Thanks, that's great.
Yeah, letting us get that process done.
And then just another thing, and I don't know where and how this plays out, but we probably should before May 15th have a discussion with union representation. There may possibly be some contractual implications here. And just with another, you know, other initiatives that we have taken in the past, we've tried to identify those in advance. Not saying we have to solve it all right now, but there should be a discussion of what those contractual implications may be and if impact bargaining is going to be necessary down the road. That way, as a school committee, we understand those contractual implications.
Just an add-on to that, I will say that I know our principals have meetings scheduled with their staffs post this meeting to, for this week mostly, I think, to field first initial questions. And then we have a separate working group staffing conversation. And we are connecting that, we'll be connecting that with the CMS staffing conversation as well.
And of course, we've knowledge with our staffing communities that there are many questions we can't answer at this time because there are multiple phases to the process.
Right.
So it's helpful to hear those questions to Brian's point as to why we're separating this presentation across two meetings, two weeks apart. So we can continue to hear, listen, and adapt as needed.
Anticipate, right.
Can I ask a question? Diana, Brian, you might have the history on this. The slide that shows, there's not a number on it, so I'm not sure which one, but the components, the scenario building blocks with the current districts on the side. So the Prescott district, that's the Windsor Gardens.
Yes.
So I've been in the seat for going on eight years now and like never in my time has like this map ever been brought to the school committee for review or discussion. I just want to put that out there. And my understanding of that Windsor Gardens district has always just been a discussion, like Brian, with you and the Cleveland principal, right? An assessment of where students are going. Is that how it's still currently being done? Or has any formal decision that we should just know about been made?
Yep, so as of maybe two years ago, 100% of the Windsor Gardens community comes to the Prescott School. There are a handful of students who are, we should be close to the end of kind of the grandfathering in where they had an older sibling there at the time. So for example, they had a fourth grader, they then all of a sudden had a, had a first grader. And I was like, well, it doesn't make sense to split them. But right now, the vast majority, 97% of our elementary age students who live in Windsor Gardens attend the Prescott School.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And that basically happened as Cleveland started to get really populated.
Absolutely.
And then the split would grow. He would take on more streets and then, then pretty soon.
And I know that was, some of that was also driven by the feasibility study in 2017. So the three schools identified in that feasibility study were Cokley, which obviously we're fixing, right, and we can't leave 15 more months. The Willet was identified, which is why we brought out the LMPA into the Savage. And then the third was the Cleveland. The Cleveland was the third school as, hey, this is overcrowded. And I know that played into some of more students going from Windsor Gardens. Did you want to talk about the community engagement?
Sure, if you have questions, yeah.
Yeah. We definitely need community engagement, for sure. And although I'm often the one saying, hey, we're a little behind. I'm so appreciative of all the work all of you have done to get us caught up. And now I'm worried that we're rushing this last, very important part of community engagement. And I wonder if we need to look at a plan that does go into the summer of getting community engagement. May and June are really tough for families. Even if we start to tell them tonight, you know, those two dates and worry that it's not enough notice, that there's a lot of complicated stuff going on. I also think we need to look at like separate engagement for staff, like have separate staff forums.
We are, yeah. What if we give you two timelines on the 15th to respond to?
I think, yeah, I think if everyone else agrees, I think that's a good.
Okay. The, I guess my thought on that is I see it both ways. Summer is tough.
Yeah.
And also, this is not a project that you want to rush. On the other hand, something, like having it marinate, like, and sit, I, I think there's something to be said for getting a response and making a proactive, taking a proactive direction. So let's, let's look at what the options are there. We'll, we'll talk about that.
That's fair. So you're back on the 15th. We'll get more scenarios. Is the expectation we're voting on a scenario on the 15th or what?
No, that's when we, we'll take any more questions and then we'll go into the community engagement process. And then you guys will get that survey feedback and get to look at that and digest that before we would do any voting.
So it's sort of like the public posting, yeah, the three options and then it goes out and posts. Excellent. The, Teresa, if you are finished, the only question I have is, with those scenarios, how many will you present to us? Do you have that number?
We looked at seven.
Okay.
I don't think we're presenting seven.
We looked at many. We looked at seven, like pizzas, we put a bunch of toppings on a bunch, took them off and it was, yeah.
Sorry, we're going to present, focus on three.
Okay.
We'll, we'll talk, we'll, we'll talk, we'll tell you a little bit about the other ones, you know, and just to speak.
Maybe why they didn't make it.
Yeah, why they didn't make it, exactly. And why, we'll speak to why we were recommending or pulling, pushing for, bringing forward the ones that, that we wanted you to stay. But mostly three.
Great.
Want some feedback?
Yeah.
So I know Paul Ricardi, when he was last here for a quarterly update, told us that it would be nearly impossible to make shifts at the elementary level at the same time we're getting ready for the Cokley. And I would just push back that nothing is impossible. What would be needed to do that? So I know we're looking at implementation September 25th earliest. But if that is what we decide is the way we want to go and we want to move grade five to the Cokley and we want to do all this fun stuff in the same summer, what is needed to do that? Because I know we don't have enough custodians. There's probably going to be a cost.
That question came up with Paul Ricardi.
It did, okay.
I think that that's something that we continue to explore about what that would look like. And that is in the implementation phase, I think. At every step of this process, you know, once we get from like hypothetical to more concrete, it's a little bit easier to see. So I think once we get a little bit down the road as to, is that an actual, is that an actuality? Like is this the decision that 25 is going to be potential shift? And it becomes a little bit more of, well, let's talk through what that might be. And like you're saying, anything is possible, probably. Not that, you know, there's, there's unlimited resources to do it. But I think that that's where you, you sort of have conversations and look to see, how can we make this work? And those have been, those will continue to be ongoing conversations with central office folks, facilities folks. Again, all those people, you know, when it comes time for that, will be at the table to determine what the best course is.
Yeah, the facilities piece is just a little bit of a different layer, right? Because it's not directly under the authority of the school committee anymore. So we're going to really need to collaborate.
I think, yep, yep, okay.
Not that I'm recommending this course of action, but I saw what's possible, seeing that video of LMPA move mid-school year.
For re-vocation.
Maybe let's not rehash that.
Part of our issue.
I mean, and I think Mr. Wells has thought about this. One, it's, I'm not overcommitting here and this is a little bit into the weeds. But even the CMS move is going to take probably more than just, it's going to be a budgetary question. And it's probably going to take more than our custodial staff. So we, we'll be hiring, probably, we're probably looking at hirings moving, you know. So that's probably going to be already in play. And so then you, the question is, how do you, how would you fold that in or what does that number look like?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just already running down the path of, we need a town meeting warrant article requesting the money to do all this. That's just full transparency, so.
What?
So I'm just going to be able to move everything.
I'm just going to pop in just to give Anne Ray context.
Thanks.
Minute 55 or almost 60 of our 45-minute discussion on elementary study committee.
Hey, you don't have the gavel anymore.
I don't have the gavel, but I got, I assumed it because Anne Ray is just arriving. I'm just helping her out.
For her, Joan to finish out this one agenda item, so.
So wrap it up. We've had a good discussion, but we are, it feels to me like we are moving into next week's discussion, actually.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm just throwing things out there that, and yeah, most of it's already in my email to you. But like, I'm going to ask you on the 15th anyway, so.
Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, hello. Sorry, I was late. We did not do the field trip yet, correct?
We did not.
But I don't see Margot online.
I expected Margot to come on around 8:30.
Okay.
We're in about 10 minutes.
Now go back to the warrants.
Okay, perfect. And then, yeah, so that actually gives us a little bit of time to jump back to the warrants. Is that okay if we?
Yep.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Fabulous. Let me just pull them up real quick. So actually, I did not get a new set of warrants this week. And I'm just gonna double check that I'm not lying. But I do have the ones from the last meeting that I was not able to attend. So we did not read those into the record. I just want to triple check that with the emails I got this week, which it's been very busy. I did not get one. Is anyone else's Wi-Fi incredibly slow today?
Yes.
Yeah, this is like.
I believe Crystal said there were no warrants. You just have to be the report from last time.
Okay, that's what I thought. So I just wanted to like triple check as I, no, I definitely do not have them from, anything from this week. Okay, so let me just pull up the ones from last week. This is just really slow. Okay. Not last week, last meeting. Okay, so these were the warrants actually that I signed for the meeting of April 10th. But again, I was not able to join that, that evening. So that week, I signed warrants in the amounts of $1,957,474.97, $4,853.35, $33,007.10, $10,578.61, $678.10, $1,513.18, and $3,469.57 for a grand total of $5,772,357.58. Any questions on that warrant report? Wonderful. That is now read into the record. Okay, so we should just move on to the next and then wait for Margot to join us. So the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. James, you want to take that away?
I would share my free. Can you guys see it?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, so your superintendent report is going to be short and sweet, but there's great things that have happened so far. I'm going to go through three different areas, instruction, operations, and our community. So first, instruction. So we just received our access boards. And briefly looking at them really quick. And briefly looking at them really quick, our ELE director, Lisa Boujou, saw that we are going to have fourteen percent of our M.O. students, which is seventy-eight out of five hundred and seventy-six students who took the access test. They received a minimum scores for exiting status. To exit through the access test, you have to have a three-point-nine illiteracy or higher and a four-point-two overall in all domains as the average. So next year, we will have seventy-eight of our students move over to monitoring status. So they will exit the program, so that's something to celebrate. Areas that we're going to dive into deeply, I think she's going to dive in with her teams, her elementary and secondary team. The reading and writing scores were lower performing overall just from within all the domains. And then reading was particularly an area of concern. She hasn't go deep into that. She's going to go with the team to see where they can actually look and analyze the data and make connections. So they can plan for next year to be more effectively efficient in the reading and writing areas. Operations, so I believe in a week from now, Matt may know a little bit more information about this than I do, but we are going to have a new registration for the buses. So we're moving to online. No more paper pencil, although if apparent issue at the, at the, at the office, we will have something ready for them to go to fill out as well. But we are moving online, no more paper forms. The deadline is the same as it's always been, it's for June 30th. And we're really trying to be strict on not opening, reopening any talks for 15. There's still a discount for paying early. And they, there is a penalty for the registration because you can be waitlisted with no guarantee. It's still a first, on a first-year basis. The difference of going online is you can add the student's ID numbers. And when you add students' ID numbers, the buses can get uploaded to Aspen and all schools will have their bus list before classes start. That was a challenge in the previous years and that will no longer be a challenge next year. Everyone will know which bus they're going on. It'll be an Aspen. You don't have to go find somebody with a list. Just go and actually look which bus your cows are on. And that will be, be more effective and efficient moving forward. We had a couple of community events. So last Friday, we had the Fine Arts Festival and it was a celebration of all the arts in K-12. And it was a phenomenal event. I went to the event, took a lot of pictures. I am thoroughly impressed with the job that our teachers do to prepare our kids. Absolutely wonderful works of art. If you didn't go, you missed out, I will tell you that. It was a great event to go to, as well as you heard, a lot of instruments playing in the hallways. And so a lot of, a lot, a lot of things to see. We also had our multilingual family fair yesterday. And this is a fair where families receive opportunities to be in the community with, be in community with Norwood staff. So all, you know, all the Norwood teachers that are in the picture there. That's them, all the teachers who are a part of that team that were there, but these people back the photo. They have a chance to mingle with the families. And then there's a lot of Norwood community organizations that show up to this event, whether it's recreational leagues or any type of resources that family may need. It's like a workout. So a lot of these organizations are always concealing, trying to reach out to our families. This was the one-stop shop for everybody. This is a really successful event. There was a lot of families that came and it was a really great event. So it blew us to the multilingual, learner, to our ELE department and all the hard work they did. So Fine Arts Festival, multilingual fair, great events that happened. And I hope, I look forward to seeing those again next year. Any questions?
Just one question. Mr. Wells, UNIP does not take Visa. And we've been asking for this to be rectified for many years because the town can take Visa and it's never been clear to us why the schools can't. Is there any way we fix that, especially if we're now trying to direct everybody to online payment?
I can look into it.
It takes MasterCard, Discover, and American, but does not take Visa.
Yeah, and I, I think there's, with certain credit cards, and Visa is one of them, there's some limitations on what you can actually purchase through municipal fees. But I will dig into that and find out exactly why Visa is not accepted on UNIP.
Because you can pay for everything on the town with Visa.
If you can pay with Discover, I feel like.
I've run into this as well in, in my community where, you know, you got to pay with Visa and it, some of the payments will be accepted on Visa and it depends on the platform you're working on. And others, I have to switch over to my MasterCard to be able to actually pay online.
That's just the same UNIP the town uses, so.
That's what, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And I pay my electric bill with my Visa card, so I know it works.
I'll dig into it and find out exactly what's going on. See what the issue is.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just one question for Dr. Munoz. How was the like percentage rate for the multilingual fair in terms of like the people invited? Just to get a sense, and, and those who came, like what was the success rate or even if you have a ballpark?
It was all multilingual families, all got invitations, obviously in their native language. Ms. Boujou reached out to all of them and the teachers worked really hard to get all their students to show up. I was there for the beginning of the event and it was already filled when I walked in. And so I would say, and so as I was leaving, there was, the parking lot was basically packed up Coakley. And so there was more families coming in. She told me, Ms. Boujou told me how many students showed, how many families showed up. I cannot remember the number, but they were very happy. The teachers were really excited with the turnout. And they were able to see a, a lot of their students that have obviously gone through their grades and they were able to see those families as well. And so there was no concerns of turnout. Obviously, it's always a nerve thing, right? Because like, this was their first multilingual family fair and they were more than pleasantly surprised by the turnout. We bought snacks and all the snacks were gone immediately. And, and we had like organizations that had handouts and stuff like that. All the hands were basically gone, maybe like second shipments coming in. So it was a very successful event. Wait, oh, let me see if I have the numbers in my notes. It was about two hundred people, about fifty-five pounds.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Munoz? Great, thank you for that. All right, I see that Dr. Frazek and Ms. Aroni have joined us, so. Oh, should I have to wait for David? Bad timing, David. For those who are wondering why we are doing this so wonkily, that is a technical term. We are going to be discussing a field trip at the middle school of which two of our members have children at the middle school and could benefit from this. So we needed to wait until we had a quorum of voting members. Myself, Ms. Sibbingdon and Mr. Hilt are the voting members for this, for this thing. But so Dr. Frazek and Ms. Aroni, thank you for joining us.
So Joan and I are.
Oh, you actually have to leave the room?
We are, we are not allowed to be here and influence the discussion in any capacity.
Okay, goodbye.
So please let us know when we can come back.
We'll come get you when, when we're done.
Weirdly, I have the same effect on kids at the middle school.
All right, thank you for joining us and you can go right ahead and.
Awesome. Thank you so much for having us. We appreciate this time. I'm going to turn it over to Alex Aroni, who is one of our Spanish teachers at the middle school, who is really the sort of force behind us doing a little bit international. Starting, starting, starting small, but we're going to figure for international trips.
Awesome, thank you, Margot. So we are looking for, looking to get approval to take our seventh and eighth grade students next year to Puerto Rico on our first ever kind of, like Margot said, Dr. Frazek, sorry. International trip to Puerto Rico to give them a chance to explore the culture, immerse themselves in the language and hopefully gain a love of the language that will continue into like the high school years. Like we are definitely finding that a lot of students go into high school, they do their two years of languages and then they are, they're ready to be done. And we want to foster that love. And I think by having them travel will give them a really great opportunity to really understand what the Spanish language is all about, the culture, the history, and all the beauty that comes from it.
I think this will also, I know Ms. Derrane has spoken a time or two about the seal of bilingualcy, along with Jess Kaplan. And we feel like this is kind of a way to sort of inspire students to take that extra step, do that honors work to really develop the language skills. Currently, right now, our students do take three years of a world language. Every other day in grade six and seven, and then we move to every day in grade eight. And then they are encouraged to continue at the high school or leave a minimum of two years. But as Ms. Aroni noted, what we'd really like to do is see more of them striving towards that seal of bilingualcy, moving into international fields. And having come on where it is Dr. Munoz was talking about last night's international fair, and just imagine if so many more of us were bilingual, how, how powerful that makes our students. So that is kind of the focus of our trip. And, and our first one, we went with Puerto Rico because it has that, you know, dual-language piece, while still not being too far. So we wanted to kind of test, test the waters and see how it is. We envision about twenty-five to thirty students as a maximum. It is done during April vacation, so not during school time. And obviously, it's a voluntary piece of the curriculum. So just a, a small trip, especially sort of a pilot one to kind of get us started and, and see how these trips work at the middle school.
I think that we'll, we'll always ask the question about fundraising and if there's a plan for fundraising for students who might want to go but have a challenge there. And so that would be a question. I, I want to just say that I endorse travel for children beyond language. It helps us to connect to different cultures and understand our place, you know, as a human being in general. So I'm all about, you know, all for the idea of a cultural sort of exchange and exposure. But in terms of, and it looks like you're, you've got all your ducks in a row, right? Unless I, you guys saw something that wasn't there. But I would imagine that if, you know, the families, that you'll have families that want to go, but there might be some that would like to do it but might struggle a little bit. And I just wanted to ask about if there was a fundraising planned in place.
Yeah, we, we recognize that, that the cost of this trip is, is limiting. Right now, we don't have a, a major plan for it. We do plan to do some fundraising, but we, we would primarily cover like tips to the people that help us along the way, which is pretty standard. Some cash places where we might need it for a meal or something along those lines. So at this point, not substantial, like fundraising, like scholarship level. But that is something, I was actually talking to Cindy Derrane about it, of, you know, how do we, how do we get some more sponsors, sponsored children to go? But not at this point.
So can, can you speak a little bit more to the selection of the students? So I heard you say honors, but I didn't know if there was a, if this is open to all Spanish students or, or students, all students who are taking Spanish as a world language? Or is it just, you know, specifically honor students?
No, it, it would be open to all seventh and eighth graders that take Spanish as a foreign language. We're even looking at, would it be, while French is not spoken there, it's still a cultural experience. So we're even talking about, should we leave it open for our French? Our students that are taking French as a world language as well? Because there's still a cultural element that would be exciting for it. So yes, it is open to all seventh and eighth grade students.
That's actually, it's, it's very nice that you say that. I remember quite vividly in middle school, the, the middle school would take a trip to Quebec for the French only, French students only. And so those of us with Spanish had to be relegated to a Don Quijote and, and a, what was the name of the Mexican restaurant at that time?
That's it? I don't know.
And that was it. That was all the Spanish, the Spanish class got. That's good to hear.
Yeah, I think our visioning is either, I mean, way down the road, is it two trips? You know, one to a French speaking, one to a Spanish speaking? Or is it alternating so that every couple of years, like the first time we're Spanish speaking, next time we go French speaking, something along those lines? So we're making it open to all schools.
Any other questions?
I mean, I just want to say thank you for your time. This is my personal opinion, it is not the opinions of others. I always am a little concerned with international trips. Just the risk management piece, the who, you know, people are open up to. It's wonderful to hear that it is open up to seventh and eighth graders. But generally speaking, costs make these trips prohibitive. So if you're a family, maybe that can't afford this, where you're paying upfront, I voiced these concerns at the high school because they're generally speaking AP trips or, you know, trips with kids that are in the higher achieving levels. And, you know, I'm just pointing that out. I'm not trying to, to poo-poo your work. I'm still going to approve it. But that is one concern that I always do like to bring up. But if there's no other concerns or comments, I was going to make a motion to approve.
Second. And one more question before we vote. And I know, so this would be a new trip that is coming in. Is this, would this, would not take the place of other trips that are planned? For example, like New York or, you know, the DC, the broader, like eighth grade? Okay, I just want, just want to make sure that that would not, you know, come in lieu of. Okay.
In addition to.
Perfect. Okay, so moved by David and seconded by Kate. Any other questions?
One more question. Do you have a minimum, like that, that you need to go?
Number of students?
Yes.
If this number was ten students, they'd be willing to go down because it is one chaperone per six students. So they would honor the price at six, but they would prefer that we, just for like travel purposes and, and running or getting the travel on the ad time would be the ideal for it. But we can go with lower six.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I did want to address really quick, security-wise. I know that's an issue with some people and I just want to make sure you guys are aware that when we discuss with the company, like our hotel rooms are going to be third floor higher. And we also have a third-party company that is hired through World Strides that will be walking the hallways while we sleep to ensure extra safety.
The same as we do for all of our, like our DC trip or when we went to New York last year. We have higher security in the evenings.
I say not, not only for, more for probably, you know, students, you know, leaving their rooms than we're really worried about people breaking into.
It's very beneficial. I enjoy sleeping. I've been having conversations recently that you're needing another pillow. It's not my emergency. Your.
I was gonna, I do remember.
You're determining who's showering right now.
I vividly, vividly recall my own DC trip in eighth grade and having tape put across our doors. Yeah, so that if we open the door, yeah. If your tape was broken in the morning and it wasn't a fire alarm, you were in trouble. All right, so any other questions before we take a vote? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Kate, would you go grab?
Should we back into budget?
We shouldn't have gone far. It is extra chilly in here tonight.
Well, it was really hot and I turned the AC on. Now I just need it a little chill. Sorry, freezing cold, sorry, Joanie.
All right, so that wraps up up to budget. So first item on the agenda for budget is budget subcommittee update.
Yeah, so update will be short and sweet and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Wells and Dr. Munoz. You have a copy of just like an outline of my notes. You can see the agenda and all the material that we reviewed on April 25th. We spent a good part of that meeting, you know, finalizing the presentation for the town meetings info session on Wednesday, Monday, that I'll let Matt and Anne-Marie talk about. We spent some time talking more about the next steps with the middle school staffing that as we all know is a huge priority and convening a working group for that over the next couple of weeks. The items on our agenda around the grant amendments, the FY23 end-of-year report, the sub-rate. Mr. Wells will take us over all of that in detail. I've been continuing just to meet with Mr. Wells to offer support and prepare the transition plan as best as I can. We have a plan for a number of items on the subcommittee level that will then come back to the school committee in June. And then we meet again as a subcommittee on May 9th at 12:30. But Anne-Marie and Matt and JJ, was there anything from Monday's town meeting session that the school committee should know?
No, it actually went fairly well.
Yeah, it was, presentations went well. We really wanted to get into the Q and A portion. There were some great questions. We did have one gentleman who very eagerly was asking some questions because he really wants to start a, a, a very large lobbying group. Would like to, to get representatives on site for a town meeting to make them understand that, you know, their decisions around funding and how they, they create unfunded mandates for us is devastating to local communities. So it was a, I thought it was a very, very positive meeting and a lot of great questions.
Great. I would agree, nothing that needs to be brought back or, or really just kind of the typical questions around the budget and questions about even just last year's budget. A question about how, you know, about the, the transportation warrant article and things like that. So it was, it was pretty good, pretty well received.
Okay, great. And I know the town had sent out an email to town meeting members that you can stop by town hall and pick up the budget book. And then as we talked about, the last school committee. And then as we talked about at the last school committee meeting, we have our own, much smaller, budget material that we want to make sure everybody picks up in addition to that town budget book. And please reference the one that we put together as a school, because Mr. Wells put a lot of time and attention into making sure that was accurate.
Yeah, that's a really good point, that the, you know, just to remind the public that the difference is, we have the budget book that the town puts out, which is generated by Munus, which is our townwide finance system, but that, you know, in general is not the way that we look at school finances. We use DESI codes specifically to.
DESI code.
Ah, DESI codes, to, to follow our school-based budget. So a lot, sometimes the Munus one can be a little clunky, sometimes incorrect. So the very accurate version would be that supplement that you can pick up alongside the budget book with the DESI codes. And that was available at that, the session on Monday night as well, so that was also well received.
Yeah, so other than that, I would just defer to Mr. Wells to take us through all the other items we talked about in the subcommittee.
Not as, not as many bylines here this week, but the review of the FY23 end-of-year reports. The end-of-year report audit came back, there was only one finding, and I consider it to be an immaterial finding, I'll explain why. The finding was on Schedule 19, and Schedule 19 is specifically next year's budget. So on each, each of the end-of-year reports for the end of the fiscal year, we have to record the next year's budget, and there was, it looks like there was some confusion between the approved appropriation budget and probably what is the article monies. So that is what the finding is, and again, I consider that immaterial, it's just a, it's a recording, the way it was recorded, and it doesn't have a forward effect on anything that the end-of-year report drives into. So we will, I will get the amendment done on that, it's just the one item, and then we'll get that submitted and we'll be good to go with that.
Mr. Wells, just to clarify for people wondering, why are we talking about FY23? So the fiscal year ends June 30th, and then it takes some time for the business department to do everything that you need to do to close out the fiscal year, and then the end-of-year report is due to the state October 1st?
The end-of-year report is due, yes, October 1st. You can get an extension to, no, yeah, to, you can get an extension to the end of October if you need it. Most districts, you know, single municipalities like this, you don't really need it, but, but yes, to your point, then we start to move forward and we start the audit process. So we collect all of the information that the auditors ask of us. That extends over the next six to nine months, with our audit completion being due in March each year, reporting to DESI. So we really, and then again, once we have the audit done, we will go and do the amendment. So really, the completion of the fiscal year is generally, happens by June of the next fiscal year. So it does take some time to work through all of that.
So this is the weird time of the year where we get that final piece of FY23, deep, deep into FY24.
Yes.
Already planned FY25 for the most part, and then extra special fund this year is also starting to look at FY26.
Yes. Yep. We live in a number of fiscal years constantly.
So you don't have enough to do.
Yeah, if I could add one more fiscal year, that'd be fantastic. The next item, I'm two in a row here, would be, we have two grants, the workforce grant and the CSHS grant, both nursing grants that we have amendments for. And we are amending the 191 CSHS grant amendment. The bottom line number is remaining the same at 95,000, but we have changed a little bit of the distribution of the funds. And two new lines we're adding, one is a contracted services, which is for parent outreach on vaping. And then we added some money for some administrative support for the nursing program to help with some of the filing. For the most part, with our, the administrative filing that goes along with the nursing, there is no admin that actually does that, so it's usually a scramble of pulling together a number of different admins to try and help get everything filed. So this will, the couple thousand dollars will just help to get those filings done this year with some assistance for, for Jill. The 823 workforce grant amendment, we are amending a number of lines down to one. So we are really focusing on the, actually supporting the FTE nursing with this. This is a, part of this was sort of a small trade-off that we did with Jill on the nursing. So she took some of the nursing that was on the ESAR grant and is supporting it with this grant because she needs, we need nurses over the summertime, and these grants can't be used to support summertime nurses, but ESAR can. So we kind of traded off some money there, which is to, it supports the district overall. And we can do that with ESAR, because ESAR, again, is able to be used for the summertime. So she absorbed some of the, that nursing that was on that grant so that we could actually do that and make sure that we had nursing for all the programs. So we would like to entertain a vote to approve this amendment, or these two amendments.
Questions?
I would make a motion to approve the amendments to the two grants.
David, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joan. Any discussion before we take a vote?
Can I just clarify? So the first grant, the 191.
Yep.
We are adding in what's highlighted, so the 4,000 for the administrative support.
Yep.
And the 15, 6250 for the outreach on vaping.
Yes.
Right? And then the other one, the 823, what is the amendment there?
Ah, 820, the 823, we are amending, so the 823 is kind of a funny grant. They awarded it to us late, and so they decided to just turn it into a two-year grant, but it's not really a two-year grant, so it's a one-year grant that's managed like a two-year grant. It's very, you know, obviously a great way for the state to do things. So we're really taking, we had expended a number of, we expended across these, these lines in the previous year, but for this year, we're amending and we're zeroing out all of the accounts except for specifically the nursing grant, and we're moving all the money onto that to support the nursing staff through the rest of the year.
So that new year two budget column.
Yep. So we had to carry over 50, yeah, we had to carry over 59, technically, the year two is $59,000 of the $100,000 grant.
Okay, so the grant original budget year two is changed into that new column, year two new budget.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Again, I do know that these are kind of new formats for you guys to look at, but I'm trying to standardize some of the way that the grants look and make sure that you get more information.
No, this is great, and this is what we've been wanting, the line-by-line, but I just want to make sure that we're all understanding exactly what we're voting on. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so a motion moved by David, seconded by Joan. All those in favor?
Aye.
So that passes five to zero.
Thank you. And I'll take a break now.
All right. So the next one is the ST math grant update. Dr. Munoz?
Give me a minute, I can hand it right back over to Matt. So the ST math grant is a, is a grant that is a digital shooter program that, that we get from, I think, from Rose Foundation through DESI, and we already have this, we already have this in place, you guys voted on the grant last year for the Willet. So Willet is in the first year of the ST math grant. Basically, the grant award includes over $40,000 in licensing and installation for professional development and support fees over a three-year term. The only cost it costs to us is the cost of participation fee of $3,500. We already have that budget in our budget. Our math, elementary math coordinator, Laura Donnelly, she already put that in the budget pre-ST approved, just in case. And so we are having a Callahan and a Prescott have been awarded these grants for next year, and so it's already in the budget, so we're not looking for money for that. But basically, we're basically paying $3,500 for $40,000 worth of implementation, professional development, support fees over a three-year term, so they'll be coming in and quoting us and they kick off this whole thing, it happens in August, so congratulations to the Prescott family. And I would entertain and ask for you guys' vote to accept this grant.
So is the Callahan and Prescott being added to the Willet?
Yes, well, isn't this the added to the Willet? Each school has their own. The Willet's already in their year one, the Willet in year two, and the Callahan and Prescott will enter their year one.
Just the spreadsheet that I had sent that we approved last year. Do we need a new spreadsheet, or are we just looking at what we had last year and saying, now we're adding two schools? I'm just trying to be clear on, on what we're voting on.
Yeah, so the, my understanding is the Prescott's in its year, year one, and it will be entering year two, but this will be.
The other way, the Willet's in year one, the Callahan in year two, Prescott and Callahan are going to be new to the grant, and they will start in August.
So they'll be getting a year one, so they're adding two, yeah.
So last year, we approved to, to accept this with, for the participation, participation fee of 3,500. Are we now needing to pay another 3,500 per school, or we already paid it?
Yeah, it's 3,500 per school. So our elementary math coordinator, Laura Donnelly, she already had budgeted her budget, 3,500 per school for all six schools, just in case they all wanted it, but only two of the schools applied, got it. The Willet, actually, I'd say six, only five, so it's already in, in there.
So that 3,500 from the Willet for the year one, we can go as for all three years, correct? That was.
That's what I'm told.
Yes, yes, right.
And it's just running different, you know, but when I talked to Laura about this, she said that everything's already been budgeted for, we're not looking for any extra money. And actually, we're, we don't, we still have extra money because not every school.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just wondering if, from record purposes, when there's other people in these seats, Matt, they have to say, hey, this is what we did on this date. Could, like, we can approve it tonight, but then could we get an update to that sheet that just shows what JJ's saying, like, now it's 3,500 for Prescott and 3,500 for Callahan, just so we can track it?
Yes.
Any other questions? Yep. Go.
I was going to make a motion to approve. Is that you, right? Motion to approve.
All right. Seconded by Joan. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, back to Mr. Wells. You probably could have done that a little better.
Where's the fun in that?
I was trying to keep the grants together, that's what, that's what the idea was.
So we have, we have a request to create a proposed LPN substitute rate. We don't have an LPN substitute rate right now, we have an RN substitute rate, and that RN substitute rate is 17250 per school day for the RN. But an LPN would be helpful in that it's a little bit, costs a little bit less, so it would be $160 per school day for an LPN. And this position would be able to broaden out our ability to bring in supports, and this is really mostly during the field trip season, where we can take a nurse and send it on the field trip and then bring in an LPN at a lower cost to help out the nurse that's, that exists, still left behind. So we would entertain a vote to create an LPN substitute rate of $160, $160 per school day.
Any questions on this proposal?
Just Mr. Wells, we have a difficult time finding nursing subs, so this also opens us up to attracting different professionals to provide that coverage.
Definitely agree. So any other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the LPN sub-rate of, sorry, my document just closed, of $160 per school day.
Okay, moved by Teresa, third second. Seconded by Kate. And any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that passes five to zero.
Thank you. Back to you, JJ.
All right, so moving on to our next items on the agenda, oops, I totally just tried to put a smiley face on our agenda, that was something I done. We're under old business, so the first item under old business, I think, is the Student Opportunities Act, that is going to be tabled until the next meeting. And then, so then that brings us ahead to the next item, the bridge one-year strategic plan. Dr. Munoz, you want to talk to us about that?
Yes, I created a slide to make that big old long sheet more digestible for you guys.
Love it.
We're going to share that with you a little bit. Let me know if and when you can see my screen.
Yep.
All right, so the strategic plan is, obviously, it's going to be a one-year bridge plan, as we're getting the new incoming superintendent, starts on July 1st. It will allow him to kind of settle in a little bit, so I'll go ahead and say why it is. So we want to do the one-year bridge plan because it allows Tim LaF, our new superintendent starting July 1, to act the link to the district while collaborating with stakeholders, and this can serve as a foundation to develop a more comprehensive, multi-year strategic plan for the superintendent starting his second year. We have a longer plan, obviously, in collaboration with many stakeholders, so that is why we're only going one year versus the multi-year. The overview of the plan has mission and vision in it, that may be something that's new superintendent we want to look at with, with, you know, various stakeholders to say, is this the mission and vision that we want to follow still? But we are putting in 13 metrics to track our progress and make sure that we are hitting the marks that we want to hit. So as you see the 13 metrics, there's a lot of them here, but they all have to do with either instructional performances or climate and culture performances, and we'll go through that in the next slide, where you can see where we have three priorities that also are in the, which is the big meat portion of your strategic plan, is we wanted to focus just on three things, your instructional focus, the climate and culture, and the third one is from the old strategic plan of investment and resource allocation, because we're restarting to do that work, so we just want to name that work and make sure that we're putting it down on paper so we can hold ourselves accountable. When we look at the metrics, though, metrics happen to have instructional focus metrics and climate and culture metrics. So we are going to still look at our DIBELS, our STAR assessments, and our access performance, our access performance, and our AP course taking rate and mask for requirements. Every single school, principal sat in and had a discussion about all of our plan and made sure that we had the right measures up there that we're going to look at. And if it's the climate and culture, we are going to continue to implement student surveys, we already do that. We're also going to implement some family and staff surveys as well to make sure that we are hitting climate and culture in a holistic point of view. Chronic absenteeism, as you know, is a huge problem for next star district of the state of Massachusetts. We want to look at those numbers as well, and then graduation rates is something that states, you know, continues to look at, so we should still look at it. Our first priority is our instructional focus, you know, so if there's no instruction, if we don't, if we're not having quality instruction and kids are not learning, that is school. That being said, the strategic objectives were from the old strategic plan of innovative instruction and personalized learning, which we took a couple of those initiatives. You can see here, it was about a professional learning system and also a way to make sure we're having inclusive practices for our, for our learners and students with special needs, and not only just meet their needs, but hopefully meet all students so that way they can be vital members of our community and agents there. The desired outcomes that we want to have, so now that we know that these are our initiatives, these are our objectives, what we want to do is, okay, so we've actually broke this plan up into two parts, the first 90 days and the second 90 days. The first 90 days will give us some benchmarks to hit, and if we can hit those benchmarks, then we can either tweak and maintain in the second 90 days, or after that, we revisit some of our desired outcomes that we want to have to meet the objectives that we are presenting to you today. So the two desired outcomes that we want to have is we want 50% of our teachers to demonstrate improvement in instructional practices as measured by coaching sessions and observations, and hopefully they'll attend, not hopefully, they will attend at least one high-quality professional development session. Also, by January, we want people to be making decisions based on data, like, and have that form of routine, so they're looking at the data, they're understanding the data a lot more, and we want that to result in hopefully a 5% increase in our mid-year interim assessments. For our priority two is climate and culture, and we all know that if there's not a safe, a safe school, then it's kind of hard to teach in a school that's not safe, and so that is definitely another, another hot topic that we want to focus on. And so we already started to increase the capacity around both the relevant trauma-informed social-emotional practices. We're going to continue to do that work, so we don't want to give schools anything new to do. We want them to keep on doing what they're doing and kind of tweak and find out within their context how they can improve, and what professional development do they need for that continued support to do that. Also, we want to create a whole system-wide system to promote safe learning environments. So, you know, we have obviously crisis and safety management teams, so we have been doing this work already, we have other businesses that have, that has happened this year, that has made us relook at our plans and revisit them, so we want to continue to do that work because that work is never done, and safety is the first and foremost thing for our students and staff. The outcomes that we want to have measured by these initiatives is we obviously want to have a 50% decrease in disciplinary incidents and a 20% increase in students feeling safe and belong, and in a sense of belonging. Also, by the end of the academic year, we want to have a comprehensive student support program focused, focused on sense of belonging, having kids feel confident themselves, being able to self-advocate for themselves. We want to have inclusive and supportive practices. And for attendance rates, DESI gives us a target every year, so there's no point in us making our own number, it's normally two percentage points, so we'll just look at DESI's target and we'll add that into there when they give us our target for next year. This happens to pair well with the Student Opportunity Act. This happens to pair well with the Student Opportunity Act, because it's our focus as well, so it's, it's another comprehensive portion of making sure the students are feeling seen and heard. Priority three is the investment and reallocation, right? So, um, this was obviously to create, this is about budget stuff, and we all know that next year, there's a lot of stuff about budget. And so how are we, um, continuing to be more efficient and operate around our schools and work with the town to do those things? So we want to look at the school, the town resources, uh, look at the financial systems, you know, facilities is more on the town side now. We are trying to, we are, we're not trying, we aren't collaborating more with human resources and trying to leverage their practices now, and we want to continue to do that work as well. And so how are we really continuing to do that work without saying, we did that, it didn't work, let's move on, and let's just try to just do something different. No, just stay the course, let's tweak where we need to tweak and keep going. So we have three desired outcomes from here, and you're gonna see that one of these ties to that elementary building presentation that we had earlier today. So we want to develop a cross-departmental task force, to really look at our human resources department, right? Who can major come over, who on, who on our side of the district can really sit down and say, what are we really doing here? How can we be more efficient? What can we optimize to be really, really better for us to serve in our schools, to serve in our, and serve in the district? Our second desired outcome is want to put another task force together or another group together to talk about budget. Like, we know that budget is important, so we need to be a FIMCOM in the room, right? What is the BBC, what is BBC gonna have to do with this, right? And how can we have that conversation earlier versus waiting until November, December, when we know we're gonna be up against it? Because after listening to Mr. Wells, we already know that we should have these conversations a lot earlier, so let's start talking about this sooner the better. Because if you look at the third one, we have the KOPL opening in twenty-twenty-five, we have the elementary study happening, we have the student services audit. That's all gonna weave into our budget process anyways. So we need to look at those three initiatives that are already happening and then look at them in silos, but look at them as how are they complementing or challenging one another? And how is that impacting our budget? And then, of course, with the first desired outcome, how is human resources playing a part to help move all those processes forward? Any questions?
Any questions on Dr. Munoz's presentation?
Can I ask like an overarching? So, the way we have reviewed and approved strategic plans have changed a number of times in the last five years. So, the very first time we did it, we, like, approved and endorsed, like, every aspect of what was in front of us. And then, last year, when Dr. Taylor took it over, she had asked us just to approve the high-level, like, priority and initiatives and not the action steps. And, and now this is, um, a different template again, um, so if we could just get some direction, like, what are we being asked to approve, is my first question.
That's a great question, Teresa. I would say that because this is a two-part plan, you have a ninety-day one and a ninety-day two, the action steps could change, right? Because we have the action steps there, and if they're not working, we don't want to say, oh, we're gonna do these again for the next five months, they might work now, and all of a sudden not meet our goals. Like, there may be instances where we don't meet our goals, but we want to have an opportunity to pivot, not necessarily pivot from the objectives and the initiatives, and not even pivot from the desired outcomes. We want to keep the desired outcomes, we still want to have those task forces together, so they're meeting frequently and they're doing that work. We still want to have those practices for our motivating learners, high-quality professional development, we want to still have, make sure this is going to work for school for surveys, we want to do all those things. Those don't want to stop. How we get there, though, may have to be pivoted after we reassess up to ninety days and look at all of our metrics and see where we're going toward.
That's fair. Yeah, so a second question, follow-up question. So, again, this has changed throughout the past couple of years, but what are we as a school committee asking for in terms of reports and updates? Are we still going with, like, every quarter, we want an update on this, or?
I think that the ninety-day mark makes sense, if that's how they're, sorry, if you weren't finished.
No, no, yeah, no.
But, like, a report back after you guys have talked about it, right? Then you can give.
Yeah, always get the interim data, that's a great question, Gabe. But always get the interim data, obviously, look at our tenant rates, look at our student surveys, look at our staff surveys, look at our family surveys, right? And that's how we're gonna know if what we're doing is working, if it's not working, and where we're gonna pivot at, right? So if we're having a high satisfaction on the sense of belonging for students, and what we're doing is working, so we're gonna just double down on that, right? If, if, uh, staff feel like morale is really low and they need to tweak, then we need to look at the best fact that our safety support is good, so say, okay, what are we doing? Maybe it's our professional development side, and how are we not adhering to their needs? So, um, you know, so the, the, the plan is, is set, but how you get there may change, depend beyond, and to Teresa's point, you, we can do a quarterly report, but I don't know how much you're gonna get out of that, because the report should be based on some of the metrics. And we won't have some of those metrics because we don't give mid-year, we don't, you know, we're gonna win the mid-year assessments, to the mid-year, to the mid-survey, right? We can give you progress on some of those things, maybe priority three more than, more so than not, because we would have hoped that task force would have been established, people would have been already assigned in roles. Time I live in, established for, like, KOPL and for elementary building study and all those other things. So, that is what I would say, if you want, if you, if you're wanting, if the school committee wants to expect a report quarterly. You just may not get a report on the whole thing, it may just be unfortunate that we know that are already going based on our.
So would you think that the ninety-day would be feasible with that? So, like, I, I, I like kids, you know, just, it just makes it a nice chunk, because then you would know, you would be able to report to us what you needed to change in those action steps, and then what you think you might have to change in the next ninety. Does that make?
Right. Yeah, we would probably have all the data in, because I think the Renaissance Star window will be open in January. And, and, and maybe, maybe at the end of January, I was still talking with our coordinator about this. That will be the only data feature missing, because we want to actually implement surveys probably in December, so we can actually look at them in January, um, depending on when you guys want us to report. If you were having to report in February, we'll have all the metrics.
So, yeah.
If you want to report in January, then we might be missing some of those STAR assessments.
I think whenever you're reassessing and you have the data, I don't know if that's ninety days, but. Yeah. Whatever your findings are, that's, that's what we would want to hear about, and then whatever you decide for pivoting or whatever, that, that makes sense to me.
I just want, I just wanted to have a place where we can pivot if something isn't working, have school leaders stop and pause and say, this is not for my context, for my building.
So is that mid-year then?
If it's really working, so we can leverage best practices between buildings and say, how can this, how can we double down on some of these things? Versus waiting for a whole year to come by, even if we're giving both of your quarterly, quarterly reports, like, in the previous years. Or if you're doing, you know, if we, if we can't pivot, you're not gonna see huge results change, and I don't want that to happen.
So ninety days, my colleagues are just saying, that's ninety school days, which is mid-year, which is when you'll have that data, right? A possibility.
We say ninety day, I, I wrote ninety days because there's a hundred and eighty days in the school year, so I'm basically just saying, midway through the year, once we have the data, we're looking at it and analyzing.
It's not three months. I was, I did the same thing, Kate. I did the same thing. I was like, September, October, November, and then.
I think that's also important to note, that generally speaking, best practice is when a new superintendent or new leader in certain roles come in is that they do an entry plan. And generally speaking, the entry plans are ninety days, so I think it aligns with everything well.
Great.
Yeah, that's something we're gonna have to do a lot of talking about in the next couple of months and work on with Tim, the entry plan and superintendent goals and.
Yep.
All that fun stuff again.
So, I'd like to make a motion, nobody motioned, right?
Nobody yet.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Move to.
To approve the one-year strategic plan with a mid-year update.
Second.
Can I, I have some other questions?
Okay, yes.
Okay. So, so JJ, if you could just talk, Dr. Munoz, sorry, if you could just talk to us a little bit more, um, I, I want to understand philosophically where we are on some things from where we were, and, and later on in today's agenda, we're talking about legislative advocacy. And one of the things that's gonna come back up is our previous commitment to, like, the whole child, um, which I know is embedded here in Objective Five. But also, like, uh, we, we previously wrote a letter in support of the Thrive Act. And I, I want to talk through and, and understand better if we're now committing to anything here that goes against the Thrive Act. Like, are we, are we becoming?
Is the what? I can't hear you.
Um, the, the Thrive Act? I guess he's, he needs me there right now.
The Thrive Act.
The Thrive Act?
What's the Thrive Act?
Uh, the, the Thrive Act, so, um, it's in the legislative to, um, get away from MCAS as a graduation requirement and to do, um, more comprehensive, well-rounded, um, assessment of our students. And although I understand we need data, I'm not questioning that, like, some of, of these metrics are so data-driven on tests. I just want to make sure we're now not committing to something that counters decisions we made before. Especially if in, like, a half an hour from now, we're saying we still support our advocacy around the Thrive Act.
Well, there's also a reason why we didn't list MCAS there, right? Because MCAS is probably, you can't pivot mid-year for MCAS, and MCAS is a state assessment. And STAR, the STAR system is actually a particular of MCAS, um, but, uh, in addition to that, we have our DIBELS, right? Our DIBELS is, is, if kids can, you know, phonics are getting boring, right, and whether they're appropriate grade. And, but I think what's more important, that hasn't actually been added, at least to my knowledge, is actually hearing from our stakeholders. The teachers are gonna take surveys now, and they're gonna tell us how they feel. The students haven't taken surveys, but I don't know how much work we have to give, because of all the other high needs that have been happening, right? We know they're there, principals look at them, they talk about their staff, but as a district, we haven't had that huge focus on them. And then also our families, you know, we, there, there's a, there's something that we need to engage with families, it's, it's in there, right? And we know that, that practices to have your families engaged, and yet we're not leveraging their voice enough. So, that's when you get the wholeest part of the student, but we still need numbers to know that they're doing well, right? So, it can't just be the eyeball test, we need qualitative data and we need quantitative data. So we need both, both, both those measures. As far as, like, going backwards, I mean, I, if you're talking about just what the state did or what Norwood did, that, I mean, you guys obviously can have that conversation. But I would, I would say we need to know how we're moving the needle, right? And if we don't know how we move the needle, and it's just based off an observation of how we feel, or maybe some events that have happened, it just won't, it won't still feel good for us, in my opinion.
I guess this is kind of why I was asking, what are we voting on? And, and also, just, just on a side note, the, the slides need to get in our packet, so we don't have the slides. So, like, the overarching language in the slides I support, but then it's a little bit of a different language in some sections in the strategic plan. And, and then there's some parts, and I know this is still a draft, and I know action steps are still being fleshed out, but they're not all there.
The action steps are there. You may have a different, you may, if you have a hard copy, you just may have printed it too early. And the slides actually are copy and paste from the plan.
What I'm hearing is, I mean, like, a, a request, or, I think we should vote for the action, or, for the, um, overarching priorities and outcomes. And what I was hearing is that the action steps may need to change periodically, and so we should have.
And, and the reason why I say that, Gabe, is because, like, if you look at priority three, a lot of that is actually the new superintendent, and, 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 and that's gonna be his work. And so, like, he may convince people of the action steps, right? Because I'm saying that we are making a plan for him to lead this work, and so all those work we've been doing already, that's more under his purview. And so, like, that's why the action steps is hard to vote on, because you're like, you can't, you don't want to lock him in and say, hey, this is what you're actually gonna do. We know this is what the desired outcome is, we want him to get there, and he may have a more efficient and effective way to do that.
Right. Uh, Dr. Munoz, when did you last update the file in our agenda?
Um, this, yes. But, what, what's the name of the document you're looking at?
The one that's linked in our agenda, and I asked Mr. Wells to print it out for me, like, at four o'clock?
Yeah, four, four-thirty, right around there.
I mean, and, and there's two copies right now, there's the one that the principal worked on, and then the one that I have to put in the school committee folder, because, and that one, like, I can't, that one just, like, changes for me. I just, I haven't cleared that one out yet, I've put in the school committee folder, so I, you may have the second version of that, which obviously would not be updated, because they don't, they don't technically do that, other than copy and paste. Um, let me look at the agenda one really quick, and I can let you know. So where are you seeing on that one, other than the goals and benchmarks for the desired outcome one, on priority three, what else may not be filled out? What you're seeing, so I can pull that one up right now to get it.
So, priority two, the ninety-day adjustments, or I guess that's what you're saying that's coming, right?
Priority two, yeah, the adjustments are not gonna be written because we haven't read the data yet. So all, every, every priority, the, the ninety-day adjustments are all gonna be blank.
Yeah.
Because either they're gonna be copy and paste, we're doubling down, or like, no, that didn't work, what are we doing differently?
Got it, got it, okay. I mean, I, I'm just asking questions from my perspective, do, does anybody else have the same questions or concerns around, are we aligning with other things that we have voted on and/or were talking about later in this meeting?
I don't, I, I view this as, I guess I view the advocacy work as more long-term, right? Like, we have to deal with this, the situation that we have now. And the situation that we have now is not what we're advocating for, otherwise we wouldn't be advocating for something different, right? And so I see this because it's a one-year bridge plan, um, split up actually into two, it's actually a half-year bridge plan within kind of, like, goals, but the possibility of tweaks for the other half of the year. I see this as not necessarily contradictory to our advocacy. It's dealing with the landscape that we have now, but still advocating for the landscape that we want through our advocacy. Yeah.
Also, is there, if it's just, I don't know if it's more than the advocacy piece, but for Thrive, and you know this better than me, because you've worked on it more than I did, but it's not about, it's about graduation rates and, or, agile, agile, oh my god, eligibility. It's not necessarily that MCAS would be going away and that people wouldn't be using it anymore for data purposes, right?
Well, it depends on what goes there, there's different.
There's different versions of it, okay. But I think, to Joan's point, you know, we're using the tools we have now, and that can adjust based on, like, the tools as they are relevant or not.
Having a, a further conversation with you about this, because, like, I want to better understand what you're asking me for, because I obviously, I'm, I don't have the history of Norwood. I don't know what you guys are saying, what you put in on previously, but I can tell you, we're still gonna do the MCAS report in October or September. And I'm hoping that these things that we're looking at now, and how we're looking at the student from a social and emotional standpoint and an academic standpoint, will influence MCAS results. Because they're a school that are prepared.
No, I appreciate that. I got, I guess another question, so next meeting, we're having the school improvement plans come to us, either the updates or, or the new ones, and we want them to align with the strategic plan. Is there anything in here that we would be approving that then causes the high school, the old hand, the Callahan, who are halfway through a plan, to not be in alignment anymore?
No, I don't think so, because I, I wanted to broaden this umbrella and say, because first of all, we're using the same initiatives as we used in the old plan, right? So, priority one has the same two initiatives that we focused on last year and the year before that. Priority two, same thing with climate and culture, five, whatever those, those five words, five words. So they're the same things, I'm just making them as an umbrella, this is a climate and culture umbrella, this is an instructional focus umbrella. So, it should not change, whatever their mid-year plan is, um, because I told my said, if, as long as I'm always on a practical focus or climate and culture, which is the initiative we've been working on, it should be okay.
Okay. Um, before we vote, sorry, um, Objective One, I know, Dr. Munoz, you were, we were still working on that last night. So what, what is in the packet on Objective One the rest of the school committee hasn't really seen, so I, I hope everybody has, is reviewing it. The desired outcome number three, I love it, I'm glad we got that in, the alignment of all those different initiatives. Desired outcome number one around human resources, also totally on board with that. Desired outcome number two, I, I wonder, um, this reads to me like something that Tim might put into an entry plan, but I think it's, it's bigger because I don't think we need to develop a, a cross-departmental task force, because we already have a process in Norwood that we have to operate within. So I would just wordsmith that, because, like, we've already committed to BBC meetings as soon as town meeting's over. So, right now, the way this is read is we're gonna be doing something additional, where I think we work within how Norwood already operates.
I, I don't disagree with Teresa, I, I just don't know the process of what you guys have with the town right now, and so that's, that's a learning curve for me. And so, like, I could sit down with you and that, and we can do a group by yourself, and Emery could be there and say, this is actually already a work that's already happening. But I don't want to do anything new and different, I want to elevate that work and make it more efficient.
You said priority one outcome?
Uh, priority number three, desired outcome number two.
Priority number one from the old plan, she's in the, I don't know, thinking right now, it's priority.
It's essentially what we're already gonna do with the ABC, right?
Yeah, I, but you know what I mean, I just want to capture the.
That, that's how you write plans, good job, JJ. We're gonna hit a hundred percent on that one, because we've already got it in the works, right? Let's just documenting what we're gonna do, great job. That's how you write plans, right?
That is, that's how I write goals, actually.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm saying, I'm, I'm not trying to be facetious, but.
No, it works, that's how I write my goals.
We have struggled for a long time to properly document what we're already doing. And I would like to point out, this could be a good first step to that, right? A cross-departmental task force composed, composed of representatives from the school district and municipal government, sounds an awful lot like what we already have set up, so we're just kind of documenting it.
But it was documented on the last one.
Yep.
In, in the way that it actually operates.
With, where, they're not gonna operate in that way? It sounds pretty cool.
It sounds pretty close to how we operate.
I just changed it to refine.
Great. Analyze resource allocation practices, propose recommendations for optimization, sounds pretty close.
Yeah, I mean, that's BBC, right?
Yeah. But I'm just saying, we should call it what it is.
Well, I think it's more broad, because, I mean, technically, I don't actually think that work should be being done within BBC, because it's the budget balancing committee, it doesn't really make a lot of sense, but we're just kinda repurposing it.
Well, yeah, I mean, well, but, but to that point, are those things we wanna take on? Because I've been saying for months, we need to reconvene the three boards and revisit our fiscal policies. If we don't think BBC is the appropriate place, then we should say it's a priority of ours to meet with our colleagues and revise our fiscal policies.
I, I think that's kind of the thing, well, I think that's something we'll have to probably take offline, like, in another, just because I think we'll have one hell of a time trying to get all three boards together. Um, and that BBC is probably the more-
Yeah.
Um, efficient way to do it, because you have representatives from each. Um, so unfortunately, it's, it's probably what it's gonna be.
But either of those fit under desired outcome number two.
Yeah, correct.
I think I'm just struggling, because this is now the fourth template we've seen in five years of a strategic plan.
Yeah, there's a lot of reasons for that, though. So, but yeah, I can understand what you're saying, but we just have to roll with it to the extent that there's a lot has happened, right?
It's about, it's under our, it's under our governance to say, in what format and what template we want used.
Yes, and I think this is, this is a broader conversation. I think you and I are at different spots in this.
We will never agree on what you're about to say, and that's okay.
It, it is, I, I just think there are too many examples, and the past five years have given too many examples of, you can come up with an excellent plan, and stuff happens and it changes it. So, I'm always different, I'll send you offline something different, one of my favorites, um, that was ever made, um, that I think you might like, and maybe I'll sell you one. But, um, but yeah, I appreciate the feedback, feedback, no, I, I hear what you're saying, but yes, that is a total side conversation. Can I make a motion to approve if there's not already a motion on the table?
There's already a motion on the table. Okay, there was, I couldn't remember.
Motion by me, seconded by Kate.
That was right. Um, any other discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain, because I'm not against what we're trying to achieve, but I don't feel it's in a format we can vote on it yet.
Okay, so that is four, zero, one.
Excellent.
Does that sound good? Okay.
And just to add a little bit, there may be a, this template that you mentioned.
With a new superintendent, there might be a new template.
Which is entirely possible.
I'd even say probable.
Probably, yes.
The, the objectives, the goals, priorities, those are all, that's the same state.
So, I, I just, yeah, I just, I, we're, I just want Desi to have easier templates, this is what it goes in. That's what I want. Okay, all right, so, we're gonna move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the, um, review of the long-term agenda. Um, again, I'm gonna try to keep this as short as we do every time that people look at it, if you think there's something missing and egregious, um, or you want something on there for your subcommittee, your meetings that you're having, um, please do, um, go on there and make comments. Um, Tracy, you're really good at making comments, it's really helpful, I gotta be honest. Because there's a lot of things, there's a lot of things that we have to do every single year, um, that sometimes, that gets shifted around, that get missed, um, and-
So, I just have-
The things that live in Tracy's brain run free are, like, really useful to me.
I have a couple questions for the fifteenth. So, the handbooks, um, do we need people to come and present those? Or is that just gonna be presented by central, like, hey, here's the, like, here are the changes?
We generally have, um, representatives come in and present those handbooks, in my recollection. Um, I don't, so, last year, I don't know if they're gonna be, are they, I don't know if they're gonna be ready for the fifteenth? Is that the plan, JJ? Because I, to be honest, even last year, we, we had to push it out, and as long as it was done before the beginning of the next school year, we were okay with that, because everything's electronic now, right? It's not like we have to send it to a printer.
Right.
Um, I don't wanna get into the habit of approving them in August for a September start, that's not really good practice. But, um, I mean, generally, in our past, we had done it in May, and one of the meetings in May, because it needed to be printed. But is that the plan, was there a plan to have those presented in May?
Um, there was a plan, I, I would have, some of the handbook, right, I just wanna make sure I heard.
Correct, yes.
I was thinking more June, because I wanted the school leaders to focus on their school.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Also, Emery, if that is not, we need, we're having the scenarios presented, so-
Yeah, yeah, there's, anything we can do to bump things up with the fifteenth would be really, really useful.
Yeah.
My hearing, that's a June.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably a June twelve.
But are we keeping the school improvement plans?
Yeah, I think we should keep those, okay. I would, I would, that was the plan, to have everyone come do the, the set, so-
Just a suggestion, um, I know the elementary handbook tends to be the one that takes a little longer, because there's more people who have to work on it. Um, maybe just check with Dr. Frazek and Dr. Galligan, because they have it very planned out with their school councils. And I believe at least Dr. Galligan already has his handbook done with the school council.
So, he- I'm, I was just more worried about time, too, like-
No, I know, but then, but then we would be asking him to come back in June. So, we, right, every spring, we have this conversation of trying to be mindful of our principals and having them come just once.
Oh, of course.
So, just maybe check in, if somebody has it done and it's only gonna take five minutes, because maybe there's not a lot of change, I don't know.
That's fair, that's fair, I can definitely, we can definitely check in with them. And, you know, I do wanna put out there, too, though, that, you know, like, tonight, we had, um, you know, several people, including Dr. Munoz right now, joining remotely. So, I mean, it's not as bad as it has been in the past with needing to show up in person several different nights, uh, several different months in a row. But, um, but that is fair, that if it's, uh, you know, no changes, here's the handbook, same as last year, please approve, we could definitely get that done quickly.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I've just been updating, as we come out of policy meetings, or I come out of my one-on-ones with Matt, or school health council, or middle school building committee, I've, I've been updating, and I did it for you. And, and then I, I confirm if people approve, so, um, you, you have my notes there.
Oh, absolutely. And like I said, they're, they're very, very useful. Um, so, yeah, that's my pitch, um, for, uh, the long-term agenda. If you see things on here that are incorrect, or you need, we need to add things, I know, for example, we need to add some policy stuff on there for, um, forward thinking, um, that would be great.
Emery, I did have one question on there-
Yeah.
-at the end, and maybe this comes up with summer scheduling as well. Um, I wanted to ask Mr. Wells, with his perspective, because right now, we only meet on June fifth and June twelfth. Are you gonna be in a place in June twelfth that you can tell the school committee whatever we need to know before you leave us? Or should we schedule a very short, one-item meeting with you at the end of June to get, like, a final report before you transition?
Can I amend that and have you put it in the memo?
It's a good question. Um, don't know the answer right now, let me think about that a little bit, just because it's gonna be complicated. And, and again, even on June, you know, the last week of June, we're not gonna know, because we have until July fifteenth, really, well, July twelfth, because they want it on the twelfth. But you, you, you know, by statute, by July, to, by, you have till July fifteenth to get everything kinda squared up at that point in time. Um, so, there might even still be some churning that's going on within those next couple of weeks. Um, let me think about it, I, I mean, I, I'll probably give you a directional report on the twelfth.
Mm-hmm.
Certainly, that, there's a number of days after the twelfth, though.
Well, that, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, a lot of things.
Yeah, we'd have to definitely look at that anyway, I mean, obviously, really, there's only like one more week in June after that.
Yeah, because there, there was just, like, the past couple of years, there were certain situations, as a budget subcommittee, Ms. Sheridan would bring to our attention, and we would kind of be like, okay, move forward, or don't. And then, because Ms. Sheridan was still gonna be here in July to then give the formal report, it's just a different dynamic this year.
Yeah. I mean, certainly, when, um, you know, probably in September, you usually get like a, like a final report, like how everything kinda closed out. Um, that'll obviously be, um, someone else giving that report. Um, however, I, you know, I, I don't, I'm not disappearing.
You don't wanna come back for an appearance?
I, I won't come back, we're just here, so I certainly will, you know, uh, you know, lend some support to the, whoever follows after me.
Okay, thank you.
I will put out there that the only day we would be able to do it, if it's a Wednesday, would be the twenty-sixth, because the nineteenth is Juneteenth.
Yeah, that's what, I, I put the twenty-sixth on, on there as, as the question.
That's right.
So, that is legitimately the only-
Or you know Friday, June twenty-eighth, at like four fifty-nine, as Matt walks out the door.
Yeah, I've been leaving for, uh, July break, like, uh, no.
I'm joking. So, I can't meet that day anyway.
The Friday before July fourth week, I'm not sure I'll be in a state to do any kind of meeting. All right, um, so we will definitely, we'll, we'll keep that, uh, discussion going offline. Um, so, we're gonna move on, um, next item is policy, we don't have anything under policy. However, do we wanna give a quick update?
Yeah, so we do have a few, um, so, we met this week, and there's some technology policies around, um, cyber safety, so, social media and these things. Um, there's a conversation going on, or that's gonna be kicked off with the administrators, about what's currently being done, before we suggest any, uh, verbiage about, um, around policies regarding, um, usage. And I think that's starting around the twenty-second, so, we're aiming to have more on that in the June meetings. But on the June fifth meeting, we should be able to, there's about five, we just didn't wanna do it on the fifteenth, because we didn't wanna load it up with all the other things that we'll be reviewing. Um, there should be, I think there's four or five, um, agreed upon, we recommend just to go forward, either Joe Kidd said, we're already doing it, or it's just more cotton dry, and so, we will move ahead with those.
Maybe new policies, so we'd need to vote on them, and then, and then put them up on the website, and then vote again.
So, we could do the final vote on the twelfth and get them on the books, as they say.
Yeah.
And I can't remember if there's anything else, but this is the time of night, I start to lose it a little bit, so.
No, that's about it, like, there were, you know, we, we didn't meet, we met this week, um, we didn't meet a lot, and that's why there's nothing in the packet for this week, it was too close. Um, we didn't meet last week, we, we were gonna switch and do, because of the, the, the break, it kinda got shifted, and then, we were like, all right, we're gonna meet on the opposite weeks from when we were doing it in the first place, now we're back to the original schedule, so.
No, we're not, it's a different, it's changed three times.
But as everybody knows, like, policy, you know, has kind of taken a bit of a back burner to everything else that's going on. Um, it's not dead and gone, we're not, I, I said in our policy meeting, it's not like we're gonna wait ten years to do another, like, review of our policies, where Kate is keeping track of the ones that MASCE is, is putting out, what we're reviewing, um, and voting on. And so, at least we know what has been changed, and it's not something that we're gonna have to, like, come up, you know.
Yeah, and I mean, we've kind of been like, if there's anything on fire, like, triaging, right? And, and these social media ones are important, um, but we also, it's important to take the time to propose the correct thing, and know exactly what's going on with how it's used and everything, so. Um, like, it's a slow, tedious thing, as you all know.
Yep. That's it. All right, um, so, we'll jump right ahead to the next items under new business. Um, so, our first item here, I'm actually gonna let Ms. Torey talk to this, because she has been driving this like crazy. I said I would help, and then I was not available any of the time, so.
It's okay, it's okay. I'm becoming quite good at negotiating individual contracts. Um, so, we are very excited to announce the appointment of our next Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. Um, before I talk about the candidate, just as a reminder to everybody how we got here, um, this is not a third Assistant Superintendent position, this is still just a second. But what we did through our FY twenty-five process, um, is we looked at how we could reorg the central office. Um, and with Dr. Taylor leaving and taking on a new opportunity for her career, which I hope is going wonderful, I hope she's doing very well, um, that allowed us to look at the Assistant Superintendent of Operation and Strategy, and determine if there was a way to merge that with the Director of Finance. And we determined yes, and as part of our FY twenty-five budget, as you know, we've reorged. Um, and then, we moved forward, Emery and I, um, Mr. Wells, Dr. Munoz, and Mr. Luff, our incoming superintendent, really looked at that job description. The school committee approved that job description a number of weeks ago, and then we hit the ground running. Um, so, we had eight candidates apply. Um, four, we invited to interview, three took us up on that opportunity to interview, and we had three qualified candidates come into our search committee. Um, our search committee was Mr. Wells, Emery, myself, Dr. Munoz, Mr. Luff, Jody Smith, the union president, um, Sherry Sullivan, who is one of our administrative assistants to the Assistant Superintendent, Eva Martin, who is a financial analyst, Maya Bodenhoffer, who is the, um, Chair of the Finance Commission, Diane Ferrera, the Bulge President, uh, President Principal, um, and then, am I missing somebody?
I think so.
I think I got everybody. Um, and then, we also had some participation from Lisa Yu, uh, from HR, I can't say her last name, I'm sorry, Lisa. So, two weeks ago, we interviewed three candidates, and then, um, we decided, as a search committee, that we wanted to offer a contract, uh, to Mr. Sean Mannion. Um, Sean is coming to us from twenty-two years in the Newton School District. Um, in those twenty-two years, he was first a senior budget, budget analyst, um, and then, since twenty seventeen, he has been their Director of, um, Finance. Um, so, he has accepted a three-year contract with us, uh, to start July first, twenty twenty-four. Um, so, tonight, we just need to approve the contract and vote to approve the appointment.
Great. You have, uh, the contract in your packets, any questions on the contract, or the process in general? For the candidate?
No, thanks to all who participated in the search and, um, and getting this done in an expeditious way, it's a hugely important position, and he's, this, the qualifications, um, I'm excited, it seems like it are gonna be an asset to Norwood, and so, that's very exciting. And I'm, um, I, I understand that these, these finance folks are hard to find these days, so I, I think, uh, I, I feel grateful, so, that's all.
Motion to approve the contract?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes five to zero?
And I, I do think we also need to clarify that we are giving the school committee approval to appoint, because that, that's our legal authority to appoint.
Okay.
So, I'll make the motion that we are appointing Sean Mannion as our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations.
Moved by Teresa, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by David. Were you, do you want me to rephrase that, Joan?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so, five, five to zero, to appoint Sean Mannion as our next Assistant Superintendent of Business and Oper- you know what I said, Finance and Operations, I should not have said Business, of Finance.
So, the contract is on Emery's desk, please make sure everybody signs it tonight, um, because Sean will be coming in tomorrow to sign it as well.
All right. Great, so that is done. All right, so the next item on the agenda is legislative advocacy.
So, I'll kick us off, um, and then, um, Kate and David can, can also discuss, because the last meeting on April tenth, we kinda divided things up by topic, um-
Can I start? I didn't get to do my letter, I apologize.
Okay.
Teresa, you.
All right, so, so David, you had offered to take the lead on, like, the behavioral law, is that something that you're still wanting to work on?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, at our last meeting, um, Joan, when you had the gavel, you tabled and said, let's move some things to tonight. So, we moved some things to tonight, um, so I just-
Starting it at nine forty instead of ten thirty.
Hey, I, I, factually, you said, let's table it, I'm just reiterating what you did. Um, but in the packet, the two things that I said we should just revisit, one is the letters that we wrote last year, um, in conjunction with our union. Um, and then, also, if we wanted to continue to advocate for some of those things. So, if you look at, um, the document that says materials reviewed at the four-ten meeting, that'll link you back to what was in our last packet. Um, and then, if you go to the MASCE resolutions to review, one of the questions is, do we want to consider, um, continue this work? And do we want to, uh, let MASCE know that we wanna be one of the school committees who's officially endorsing the resolution going forward, because these resolutions expire and they'll fall? And the two resolutions that I was the most interested in talking about, again, with everybody, is around the Thrive Act, that I brought up before, and then, also, around, um, Medicaid retainment. That Medicaid reimbursement would go directly to the schools. So, we advocated around that before, do we still wanna advocate for it? Do we wanna be one of the school committees that endorses that resolution on the Medicaid reimbursement retention? And then separately, my second question is around the Thrive Act.
Yes.
I know.
So, I'll, I would like to make a motion that we continue to advocate around those two issues in particular, the Thrive Act and the Medicaid reimbursement.
Okay.
Moved by Joan, do I have a second for that?
I'll second for discussion.
I was gonna say, well, I'll second, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, seconded for discussion. Is there discussion on that?
Anne Marie, can you just read that motion again?
Sure. Joan, would you like to repeat it?
Sure. I made a motion to continue our advocacy around the Thrive Act and the Medicaid reimbursement laws. Or lack of laws, actually.
And that was seconded by Teresa for discussion. But I don't see any discussion.
Let's list Thrive as alternative to MASC, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the reformulation, this isn't, this is just expiring ones. Yes, no more discussion.
Okay. Alright, seeing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So five to zero.
Okay. And then, just so we're clear, because we have to forward our minutes to MASC if we do, do we want to sponsor those two as resolutions for the fall?
That was my intent.
Okay. So.
With the motion.
So maybe Donna just clarified in the minutes that the intent is that we want to support these resolutions. That way, when we send the minutes, they know to put our name as sponsors of those two resolutions. And then we don't have to decide tonight, but if we wanted to start a discussion, is there another topic that we're feeling really strongly about? That over the next couple of weeks, we want to formulate a resolution that we could forward on as a new resolution to MASC?
Yes.
We have to pick just one?
No, it can be, but if, if, if there's gonna be-
Circuit breaker formula, chapter 74. Where do we start? Where do we start?
Unfunded mandates. Let's go.
How about?
So, did you see my note to you on the agenda?
No, I did not.
So what I learned at the lunch and learn on the, on the Day on the Hill, which is happening Monday, which I'm gonna go to, one thing, it was all about, mostly about chapter 70 and budget issues. And that's what they're prioritizing. But if you, MASC sent us what their, their priorities are for Day on the Hill, and largely it's around reformulating the chapter 70 inflation stuff, right? Because they made a, it's not right anymore, given the inflation stuff. But I took the opportunity to ask questions about 37 and 3/4.
37H?
37H. And what I didn't realize is that, that the President of MASC was like, we endorse this. And that did, I didn't know that. So it feels like, so I think we have to do some homework on that. Because if we propose it as a resolution, they're gonna probably say, no, we already endorse this. So I asked, I said, do you have data on how it, how it's rolling out and the impacts? Because we are-
Of course they don't.
We are having issues. But, but, but as, if, anyway. So I think we lead with proposing, we need to figure out if there's a new resolution. I think they do have a resolution. I just don't know what, how form, what version it's in about the chapter 70 stuff.
I would just respond, I appreciate that. I think that we should take the lead on this and respond to H597 anyway. Because the changes that they have proposed are so dangerous to schools, so dangerous to safety. And again, this is near and dear to my heart, but somebody that lives in the 37H umbrella, for that group to just say, for MASC to say, well, will we endorse it, in my opinion demonstrates really a poor judgment. As that law, the law originally was changed in 2022 with buried in a different bill with no conversation from leaders, including Desi. So the way that this went about was awful. And the changes they've proposed are awful. I know this is a separate conversation, but I think it would be cool to be trailblazers on that.
Yes. And look at what process would be most impactful and effective to get that done.
I would like to advocate, and this is very unformed, so, and I have no time. So I can't.
Tell us how you really feel.
So I can't. But I, I am still stuck on this idea of school, of municipalities and, and schools in particular, picking up the full cost of residential placements for students. And while I think we, school districts should be responsible for, you know, the, the school day, I'm wondering where the line is between what a municipality is responsible for versus what medical insurance is responsible for. And so I don't know if there's any resolutions out there. I can promise in a couple of months to take a look at that. But I would, that to me seems like a systemic issue that is, is impacting municipalities across the state.
And I think we have some time, too. It has to go to the MASC conference in November, and I think they need to know by September. So like, if that's something that maybe you want to research over the summer.
I would like to research that.
Mr. Wells, I know we asked in some budget meeting, or I asked in some phone call, I don't know. I asked you at some point. When Joan last brought this up, how could it be done? I think either you or Ms. Muniz said there is a process, but it's very like paperwork heavy. But then also, there was some approval or something needed, right? To be able to get insurance companies?
Yeah, I think there's one district, Lexington maybe, one of the else, I think it's Lexington, that was successful with it. I haven't looked into it myself. I'm a little busy with a few other things. But I could certainly, you know, we could, we could dig into it and see, you know, what, what it actually took. I know in, in other districts, we had some problems with it. We had kind of approached the idea, but it was very heavy on, on sort of some of the medical stuff. And we just were not prepared for, to move in that direction. And we stopped because it was, it was gonna be just a little more burdensome than we were willing to go. But that was also.
I think with the money, we say we could pay someone full-time to do this.
Well, and I'm looking for, I guess the advocacy that I'm thinking about is some sort of state mandated solution. They have no problem telling us what inflation rates are. They have no problem telling us how much we're gonna pay for tuition for out-of-school districts and some of these types of things. In terms of like rate increases and those types of things. But I'm just, I'm, I'm just curious as to where should the fair share for that burden be? Given that some of the needs are more medical in nature and others are more-
Someone's in the hospital school, but where on the hook?
Why, exactly. Why is, and so that's kind of what I'm looking for is, does it make sense for, you know, if, if a student requires hospitalization, medical insurance pays X amount, the town pays X amount. So that it's not this burdensome, kind of like trying to chase reimbursement pay work down. Because anybody who's had a high deductible insurance knows that that becomes a full-time job. And that's not what I'm, that's not what we're looking for.
I definitely support exploring that, since, you know, when you, if you have time, and I'm bringing it back.
Yeah, so as long as the committee is fine with us moving in that direction, I can explore if there's anything that we can think about writing or figure out how the laws work a little better.
Yeah.
The other issue, which I know we keep bringing up, is that chapter 70. And Kate, you were just saying, MASC is really focused on that. The stuff that I've read, and honestly, I'm a little confused with where the House ended on their budget. And I know it's now going to the Senate, but I'm not quite clear on what got pushed through the House and, and what hasn't. But the, the chapter 70 inflation that they were even trying to fix was for FY26. It wasn't even for FY25. And part of the reason we tabled the SOA plan budget tonight is because we're still trying to get some clarity around chapter 70 funding. Because the, the law, chapter 132, which is on SOA plan, I have it open right here, very clearly says in this law that the three-year plan shall be submitted and a description of how the funds receive pursuant to chapter 70 will be allocated for the SOA plan. That's the law. But then since that law passed, they've kind of like, Desi's backtracked a little bit in some of the guidance that they put forth, saying that, oh, you know, you have to do the SOA plan, but if you don't have the chapter 70 money for it, tell us what funding you're gonna use. And, and right now, you know, Dr. Muniz is working really hard to finally title money and grant money to support our SOA plan, when that isn't what the law says is supposed to be done. So another example of an unfunded or partially funded mandate.
Yeah, that was exactly what I was gonna say. When you said chapter 70 and the, you know, figuring out rates, I was already, and you just kind of stole my thunder. But like, I mean, that, that has been my, my disdain with chapter 70 and the SOA from the start, is that they were not separated. That, you know, and so, and especially in it, especially where chapter 70 does not flow directly to the schools. So that is a recipe for disaster, where it's going to, to the municipality. And then you're, as one of the, you know, the, the revenues that they get altogether at, you know, the end of the year. And, and obviously, not all of chapter 70 goes towards supporting the schools. So that also includes things like health insurance and, you know, other, you know, human resource, some other salaries and things like that. So of course, we know we have to cover a portion of the chapter 70 would never come directly to the schools and under that, you know. So you're already taking off a portion before you can even implement, you know, any SOA funds. And then, like, and like we just said, it does not flow directly to the schools. So it's very convoluted exactly how much of the chapter 70 came to the schools, especially, we've had these discussions a million times in BBC, that it's a, you know, if we start parsing off exact sources of revenue, you know, where does it end? You know, so, you know, especially in Norwood, they're not really willing to have that discussion about, you know, specific revenue streams coming to specific people. And there's little we can do about it because it goes to the town. And that is a, you know, that is a broader discussion than us. So really, what should happen is SOA really, funds really should be completely separate and flow directly to the schools, if that's what the intent is. But if it's not, then they need to just really do away with some of these mandates. I mean, the SOA is a great initiative. It's a great tool. It's a great, you know, but if you're not gonna fund it fully and have the money flow directly to where it needs to be spent, what's the point?
So the little bit of hopeful news is that Rep. Rogers forwarded, his office forwarded the education committee's highlights of the House debate, of what the House budget pushed forward. Again, that's one part of the, like, Mexico's the Senate, and then they see if it gets approved. Just to what you were talking about, the, the House budget increases minimum per pupil aid from 30 per pupil to record high 104 per pupil, ensuring that every district sees the, an increase in their chapter 70 formula. And I bring it up just to say, if that gets pushed through, I guess I'm wondering for FY25, if we get any relief from that. Like, I don't under- for me, I have, you guys on the budget subcommittee, and Matt might have a better view as to like, does that help us at all? Like.
I guess what the problem is, Kate, is again, like I was saying, it doesn't flow to us. It goes to the town. And then it gets, you know, we still really in the end have, what, one of the things we fought hard for in BBC, well, Teresa definitely fought hard for it. I, I have brought up a lot of times. I think I've, you know, I've, I've not relented, it's a bad word, but is, you know, the, the years that we saw record increases in, in chapter 70, to, in my opinion, the complete increase should have come directly to the schools, because that was directly related to the Student Opportunities Act and our high-needs population. So that may, that would have made the most sense. But that's not what happened. We still were X percent over. And so then, you know, there are a lot of different, you know, hand waving and things like that, that, well, you guys got 9%. So really, if you look at it, you did get your chapter 70 increase because you got 2 million more than you probably should have. Other towns are only getting 4%. So it's, but because you can't draw a direct line to the money, because of the way it's all in one big pool.
That increase had to do with other factors.
Exactly. So if this happens and, and we get some windfall, I can't guarantee that we, you know, say it's an extra $4 million. I doubt highly that will be $4 million added to our budget in addition to the normal percent increases.
Plus, by the time we know, it's the end of summer, right? With the timeline?
Yeah.
And then it most likely becomes going to Fall Town Meeting and trying to get money on a warrant article.
Yep.
And then figuring out, how do you then in December invest in your school system?
Well, it certainly doesn't address the positions that we weren't able to fill, right?
Exactly.
Yep. So, so while I'm, I'm happy to see that, I'd really rather see them fix the distribution of the money in the, in the way that is done than just throwing more money at it, because it doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna get it.
So just my piece of it is that I'm going to the Day on the Hill on the, on Monday. And we'll just, I can hopefully have some conversations with other districts and, and you know, what they're doing, maybe how they're approaching things. And I've asked to meet with Rep. Rogers. I haven't heard back. And then I have a ask-out to Senator Rush's office, too. So. But, you know, they could be doing 1 million things. It doesn't always mean that you get in. I'll report back.
And Kate did try after April 10th. She tried, I tried, and Ms. tried to contact people and work with people and.
Yes, and you guys saw, I did do an email, trying to be timely with when the House debate was going on, just letting them know what. I didn't speak from the admin and from the union, but I copied folks and I, I spoke and just said what our concerns are. And wanted it to be on his radar.
So it sounds like this should go back on the next agenda, just as a check-in. Kate can update from the conference. And David, if he has his letter. And then if Joan or I, or any of us, really, like, this can be a team effort, right? Like, each on our own, if there's issues we feel passionate about, just bring it to our attention. I know a lot of the people in the community have recently been asking more. So at some point, not now, because we're all very busy, but at some point, we may want to look at how to organize like a section on the website around advocacy and share the letters we've written and the acts that we're referencing, just to make it more digestible for people to understand what we are talking about.
Yeah, it's.
Circuit breaker.
Circuit breaker?
That's the only other thing I would bring up as a topic.
Yeah. In what regards?
All of it. The whole thing. The fact that, that we only get 75%. If it's only, only if we hit four times. The fact that it's, we're responsible for our bills and we don't get reimbursed until the next year.
Yep.
All of it.
Yep. Was there, was there a resolution on Circuit Breaker? Or, I'm trying to remember.
I didn't see one.
Or we were just doing our own?
It was trying to lower, it was lowering the, lowering the, the net school spending.
Foundation.
Foundation budget thing. That's what I was going for.
Yeah.
It was lowering the foundation budget for reimbursement. I think it was two times.
To two times.
If that's right.
Yeah, yeah, four times right now. Two times would be fantastic.
We, we did write a letter on that last year.
And I think that's on the, I think that's something currently working its way through, if I remember.
It's, it, well, that's where I'm staying a little confused on what got passed in the House. There are, there was like a thousand amendments.
Right.
And I'm not sure, I can't find like a clear, like, yes, this was moved and, and no, this wasn't. But Joan, I can look into that more if you want me to bring that back in the next thing.
Sure. If you would like to.
Sure.
Just, Circuit Breaker is broken.
That, that one, yeah, it is broken.
It is broken.
Funding education.
Is broken.
Is broken.
What is an unfunded meeting?
Yeah.
I'll take unfunded mandates for 2,000 hours.
I think Teresa made, just one more thing. I'm sorry. But Teresa made a really good point. And it was that, you know, as we were going back and forth about trying to be, to be impactful and effective in a timely manner as these debates go on, there's a certain level of opaqueness and difficulty, like, just making it undigestible is a challenge in and of itself. But she said something that I think is good to share, which is, you know, legislation, it's, it's a full-time job. And we have to remember that, that like, there's, this is what lobbying is about. Like, people do this full-time, all the time, just to make things, the needle move in any way. I mean, lobbying is a dirty word for some people, but it, some people do it for education, you know, like, so it's a lot to ask.
Paid lobbyist is a dirty word.
Yeah. But to that point, like, we're already doing, we have a full slate. And then trying to keep track of that ecosystem is its own full slate. So we'll, you know, maybe together, we'll keep on, keep it on, keep on trying.
Yep. I mean, if you look at the five areas of responsibility of the school committee, the school committee is working extremely hard on everyone. Budget, policy, superintendent, contract negotiations.
Like right now, you mean?
And, and, yes, and legislative advocacy. Each of those five areas demand so much time and attention.
Right.
And we are only a committee of five, who all have other commitments outside of this.
Well, five areas, five committee members. Is that a coincidence?
Too much.
Alright. Thank you for that discussion. Well, I'll put that on the next agenda to revisit and have a check-in. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the next item, is scheduling some summer meetings. So I sent you guys out a doodle poll. I apologize that it was late, but actually, everybody got to fill it out, which was wonderful. So my suggestion was that we should aim for two meetings a month. I know last summer, we were one meeting a month. But with Tim coming on board, I really think it's something where we want to at least have some things on the schedule. Even if they're shorter meetings, my, just like last summer, I would really like them to be remote. I don't think anybody will disagree with me on that. There's.
I, I would. I think if we have someone new, we want that in person.
We, we could discuss that. We could absolutely. Maybe the first one. Well, that's, that's actually a really good point, David. Maybe the first.
Or, or at least hybrid.
Yes, okay.
But then, but then we're just gonna have to be really careful of our forum in person.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. So I'll, I'll tell you. So what, I was looking at the results for July, and I was actually able to go ahead and put myself in there as, it says Anne Marie Actual, because I just used my personal email. I really, I got a doodle that was driving me crazy, where it was making me have full availability across the board. So the first date that pops up as most of us can make it, and the only person unfortunately is Kate. And of course, I had to kind of like highlight on Tim and make sure Tim could make it, because that's pretty important, is Ju-, July 10th. Four committee members and Tim can make it that, to that day.
I can make it. I'm just traveling back from overseas.
July 10th. So that would be Wednesday, July 10th. You put down that you were, that was one that you could do.
Yes.
Okay.
I can be in person on that one. So if we want, especially that first one.
So officially, that's the one week I have to work this summer, so I might as well.
I, I just think that, I think that's a really good one, too. I obviously deliberately left off the week of 4th of July, because I just figure like, that's, first of all, it's right after, you know, everyone's getting done in June. And I just, I, I personally am like, nope, I'm going off the grid. Like, I don't want anyone to contact me the week of 4th of July. Okay, so I think July 10th is a winner, and I don't think, perfect. I love it. It gets dicier after that. perfect, I love it. Um, it gets dicier after that, for getting us all together. Um, so looking ahead, there is no other day in July where we are all available, um, but if I just jump ahead, say, two weeks to, like, the 24th, um, or the week of the 24th, we could get, um, four of us together, and, like, Teresa, you were a maybe, or we could do, if we did, so unfortunately, if we jump to Thursday, uh, Tim's not available, so...
Twenty-fourth I could do, but I will be out of state, so I'll, I'll need to be remote.
That, okay, and that would, and Kate, you, you were not available, but, um, if you can, if you could come to the 10th, then at least you would be...
Is this...
I can come to the 10th, and I could, I could do remote.
July 24.
I just have to do an audible on that. So, the 10th I can be there, the 24th is a maybe remote.
Oh, wait, so David, you were also a no. Well, wait, I'm a no on the, no, no. Why am I a no on the 24th?
I thought you said four people could go.
No, it said, uh, you know why? Because I was looking at my stupid one at the top, where...
The pretend you?
The pretend me, the pretend me. No, it, it was Tim, Joan, you know, we would definitely not have a quorum, sorry about that. Um, that's another thing that's really annoying about Doodle, but why did I say no?
Doodle is like, works like thirty percent of the time.
Oh, I know why, because it's our summer outing at work, and I was afraid I wouldn't be back in time, but, um, I don't really wanna go, so, so I'm, hope nobody from work is watching me.
I was gonna say, hopefully, nobody's watching you right now.
It's, yeah, it's, it's a lovely time on Thompson Island with absolutely no air conditioning.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah, I've been there too many times. One ferry there and one ferry back, and you can't leave early, even if you wanted to.
Nope.
No, thanks.
Lobster tails you cannot get out of the shell because they're made in mass.
Oh, boy.
Fun times.
I'm like complaining about lobster tails. I know, it's like, like, how, like, first world of me, but, um, so I could actually make it. So, it would be, it would be David and Kate that could not. I just, I, I think it's gonna be really hard, and there's gonna be people who cannot make it. I think, Kate, you just said you could potentially make it remotely.
You're saying the 24th?
Yeah.
But the 24th, we need to be all remote. I, like, if, if we're hybrid, the 10th, but like, I know I can't be here in person on 24th.
Yeah, and then, and I know Kate's saying she would need to be remote, and then I think the risk of too many people.
So let's just make it remote.
Just make it remote.
Can I, can I advocate? I, I, I think, I know that we're, we're, we're doing this, but a couple of things. I think we all need a break. I think that getting the July 10th meeting in is important, because Tim will have been on, we'll be able to meet, we'll be able to do that. I would push for a beginning of July, and then the, like, last week of August. Um, and the reason for that is just like, sometimes I think resets are good, and we can let the new staff get acquainted and all of that. Um, if you wanna vote it down, that's fine, but I would be in favor of keeping the 10th, scheduling something at the end of August, and then if Tim really needed, um, we could speak with him and try to do, set something up if we needed.
So the only reason I'm going to buck you on that is because I think you're exactly right, that we're resetting, and we're resetting with somebody completely new. And I, I'd rather have something on the books and then have to cancel it.
Yeah.
Than try to schedule something later. And this way, if we have a remote meeting on the 24th, it can be one agenda item. If it, if it's none, it's none, but it could be something as easy as checking in on X, Y, or Z, because...
This is...
Especially if Tim needs us to, you know, approve something as he's working on new things.
He is, I would turn to JJ and Matt to ask us, like, over the summer, what happens and comes up, like, my push here.
Matt, look, yeah.
No, no, I know, but like, his experience.
Call, I'll answer.
No, no, his, like, experience over the summer and how that works, and I think this is part of a greater conversation, that as we begin to reset, is we need to get out of this cycle of, like, just the, like, harder not smarter needs to be our motto next year, and I think it starts with the summer. I think it would be more worthwhile to have a meeting like that last week of August, but also do something where we, as a school committee, and we invite Tim, maybe have a, a workshop where we have conversations around some of those things.
Well, I was gonna bring up...
Like, I hear what you're saying, but like, in your experiences, is there a lot that emergency comes up that we need to do in July and August?
Not as much. So, I, I, you know, in, in my world, um, summer is a churn. It's just a constant, uh, turning. You're opening a new set of books, you're closing an old set of books, you, you've got hiring coming in, you know, you're trying, you're, you're chasing through a ton of stuff, trying to get it set up properly, but it's just a lot of churning, and then we just spend a lot of days crunching numbers and running through them all. There's not a lot of decisions that we need from any, at least in the business sense, that we need from anybody at that point in time. We, we just wanna churn through. Um, it's, it's a fair statement that, you know, sort of you got some new people coming in, and maybe they wanna get in and, you know, set some of their, their, their priorities in place, you know, tour buildings, talk to people, you know, go, go to town hall, you know, all that, you know, kinda, just sort of mundane stuff that, again, also probably doesn't need a lot of, uh, from you. Uh, I do recommend having a retreat. Um, I think that's very important.
Yeah, that could be one of these dates.
Well, just as a reminder, we did commit in Tim's contract that we, by August 15th or something, I have to look at the date, we would have a workshop with him to establish protocols. That's in his contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you wanna set your norms and your protocols and make sure that...
Well, and, and that's fine, but I, I don't think we need...
For business meetings.
Then I think you do that in July. I think we need a conversation about, and this I'm gonna advocate for, like, us, us five led by us around issues of the past year, and how do we best move forward with things?
That's fair. I, I think we still need, I think we're still gonna need the July 10th business meeting, because there's gonna be so, so much we'll need to, you know, close out from the year. Um, I think that that's a, a fair point, that we could turn the second meeting in July into a workshop at a different time.
Agreed.
Well, if we're gonna do norms, let's just do it the 10th, then.
We gotta, we need to...
No, we need to workshop.
We need to be with Tim on that.
Yes, so let's do it before the business meeting.
We need to pull out MAS C and for our workshop.
So, I actually work a regular schedule this summer. I know a lot of you, like, don't.
Yeah.
I, I will be working nine to five every day, so...
I, that's, but, but this is the thing. I, I, I hear the workshop piece, but I think there are enough issues just for us to talk about, like, we as a committee that we can handle something, let's do that in August, but if we're, we need to have this thing for, for Tim, I, I don't think it's a bad thing to start it on the 10th and do it a little before, and we're two and a half months out.
Or we could do the workshop is on the 10th, and the business meeting, remote, hybrid on the 24th.
Yeah, 'cause I think it would be valuable to be in person for the workshop.
Yeah, in-person workshops, that's right.
But this is why I don't like doing the workshop that early, because we lose the momentum.
What do you mean?
We talk about it, we're excited about it, and then five weeks pass. I think it needs to be in August, where it's us.
But five weeks aren't gonna happen.
But we have to do a workshop with Tim by, by...
Yes, so let's, let's do it the 10th.
That's what we're saying, and you just said you don't agree.
No, the workshop with him, I think we, as a group, need to sit down.
I need an additional workshop.
Yes.
I, I understand.
He wants to spend more time with us.
Because it's worth, it, you can laugh at me, I think it's worthwhile, and if we're, if we're gonna talk about all of these things, and we've talked about this for a year, that's, those are important discussions to have.
I think the middle...
And I think it's important having it as we go into our year.
I think the middle con, road is probably something between what you're saying and what Teresa's talking about with MAS C. We've been the same board now for a while, so I don't think MAS C has new information for us, but Tim is an objective set of eyes and ears, and so, as we can reflect, having him in the conversation, I just wanna do one workshop, first of all. I don't, we're gonna rehash too much, but then having him in there, I think is much more efficient to, to just do the one.
So, but to that point, we, like, we have to do one before August, was it before?
July 10th, I think.
Right.
I just, then pick, because whatever you guys are gonna pick, I'm gonna disagree with. I think that you do the beginning, I think you do one in July, and then I think you do one seriously at the end of August, so, just, because it's late and we're not gonna agree.
No, I will, I'll just, I'll just throw out there that, um, there is like no dates in July that, I mean, in August, that any of us are, um, we're all available, just, I know personally, in the last two weeks of August, I am out, um, which is fine, it's, but like, it's, it's just, it's gonna be difficult. We're not, we're definitely, there are no dates where we can all get together, uh, a hundred percent of us in August right now, that I put out there.
Could I recommend or suggest, since we can't talk about agenda offline and we have to go into a pretty long...
Yeah, no, absolutely, I think that...
But, but would you maybe touch base with Tim and see what his preference is, and then, um, the reason of pushing MAS C is because there is actually a very specific workshop you're supposed to do when you onboard a new superintendent, and we, in Tim's contract, already said he was gonna go through the, um, MAS S induction program, and I know they have very specifics, and having gone through this with Dr. Thompson before, I know there's very specifics that we will be required to do.
So, I think what David's saying, though, is not, not to do that. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the level setting, that workshop, that the second workshop that he's advocating for...
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't need to be led by MAS C.
Oh, no, I'm saying the first one should, though.
Yeah, I don't...
Yeah, and we think that, and July 10th would be a good time to do that.
But, but you also have to check and see if Jim Hardy can come.
Correct, correct.
Um, so maybe if we could check with, with MAS C, Anne Marie, if you could talk with Tim, and then, again, we're allowed to agenda discuss outside of, of meeting, and then...
May, may I also suggest that, to some extent, the need for remote meetings, just so that we all get used to working with Tim, may I suggest that we consider replacing one meeting with one-on-ones, individual one-on-ones that we schedule on our own with Tim, so that we all get to sit down and get to know him.
We, we're definitely supposed to do that anyway, by, by our own...
I know, but I'm just saying, like, that, that could...
Like, outside of all of the regular business meetings during the year.
No, I know, I know, but what I'm saying is, is the emphasis on having them be in-person meetings, I think some of that can be done, it, some of that will be taken care of by that.
I'm, I'm actually gonna, uh, bring back anyway, completely to Teresa's point, we can talk about this offline, because I just realized that Tim did not fill out the August doodle yet, um, so, July is really all we can do. Um, so I think August is gonna be a giant pain in the, in the titty, um, so...
So are we holding tentatively right now, the 10th and the 24th, and we're gonna figure out what that looks like?
Move to approve July 10th as the general business meeting?
No, we said July 10th is the workshop.
Workshop.
With Tim.
Why don't we just hold the 10th and the 24th right now?